About two projects a year. We would like, and obviously, there's thirteen member counties, there's only so many projects we can get to in any given year. But one of the things we want to do is try to help get Oktibah to get a few more projects on the books. And of course, not to give you a history lesson, but just to tell you that in my capacity here for the past three and a half years, trying to figure out what is the Tom Bigby Water District. Best I can figure is back in the late fifties, early sixties, Stennis Eastland and Jamie Whitten probably smoking cigars somewhere up in Capitol Hill, saying, hey, we want to build a waterway, the ten ton waterway. So in order to do that, they created the Tom Bigby River Valley Water Management District. There is a Tom Bigby Valley Authority, just like there's a Tennessee Valley Authority. So the Tom Bigby Valley Authority was the platform upon which our federal folks established the Tom Bigby Water District, which at the time was not an agency. We now are a state agency. But at that point, we had seven members. Any county that had any water, attributaries draining into the Tom Bigby Basin could be members. We are the host agency for the Corps of Engineers. So when the Corps of Engineers built the ten ton waterway, we are the host agency. And to this day, we're responsible for about fifty miles of their levers. Not on the ten ton, but the attributaries. So we do maintenance and this, and then if they have a project, we'll go in and try to help them. So I say all that to say this, we used to build watersheds back in the seventies. There's a lot of authorities that this district has. Your membership came later because Oktibah could have been a member initially, but chose not to be. But what we're trying to present is the return on investment for the county. So what we bring to the fight is that we can go on private land, as you know. So whereas you have to stay in the right of way, if you've got a project where there is an issue with drainage, with the resident agreeing to the easements, which can sometimes bog down the process, we are the entity that can, with the supervisor, we can go in and discharge a flood control project. Fortify a bank, put in a peak stone dike, put in rip raft, whatever. So truly what I'm here to do this morning is answer any questions, tell you that, you know, I do think that we're trending in the right direction with the county. I'm looking at the projects right now, the approved projects we have is the clean out stabilization of Crawford Road, the clean out of Clayton Village, the clean out Hickory Road, Bridge, Bro- Bridge, Bridge Bro- can't say that, excuse me, Bridge, Road Bridge. Clean out of Tobacco Juice Creek and the clean out of Sand Creek. That's two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, one hundred dollars in value when you look at labor and equipment and materials. The pending projects that we've got that are to be taken to the Tom Bigby Board that you've set is the clean out of Lincoln Drive, the Hollis Creek, the South Montgomery, the Skinner, and the clean out of Sunset Drive. So the good news is that, thank you, because your membership is the reason we get to employ seventeen people, right? You're trending, we're going in the right direction to get a few more projects on the book. And I would also say, our twelve guys, we have twelve crew members, and then we have five folks that are staff administration. I would put our guys against any private sector, you know, they're, they come in, they do good work, they discharge it. Once we get the easements and the approval, there's not a lot of bureaucracy and red tape here. Richard does a really good job, I believe, with working and sourcing with the supervisors. So I do think that it's, it's an interesting membership that you've got with us. I'll say one more thing, I'll give you a couple more things and then yield the floor. Years ago, I worked for Senator Wicker as in the state capacity. And it was at the time that John McCain was trying to get the earmark removed. And regardless, not to make a political statement, but it's a neat illustration. Senator Wicker told me, it was interesting that the earmark was, you get discretionary and non-discretionary spending, as you know. So two thirds of the budget is set, Social Security, Medicaid, Medicare. But the other one third is where the one percent earmark was taken out. But it was the only percentage of the one third budget that was not spent by a bureaucrat. It was a local official or somebody, Rails to Trails, or Tanglefoot Trail, Mississippi Farmer Transportation. It was an ability to put that money directly into the community. So regardless of where you fall philosophically on that, it's an interesting illustration that when the earmark went away, that money didn't magically go back to the taxpayer, it just got absorbed into the budget. We are similar to an earmark in that everything we get is from the county. We don't get a penny from the state. So we have to pitch our budget to Brid Thompson and the company when we do the appropriation cycle. But at the end of the day, a penny that you put into this district is a penny that we discharge back into the district. So I do like that because I think that we're able to give the taxpayer and the elected officials, you know, value, right? And that's really what we're trying to do at the end of the day. Lastly, I'll tell you that the projects of a local nature, and I think this will be good news for Oktibah County, this is the fund that we have created where money is, can be placed. Every fiscal year, our board will vote to either put more money in it or not. And it's an account where the county can go in and say, hey, I've got a project approved. I want to take five thousand dollars out and put that with this project to buy rip raft. So it can be used for engineering studies, it can be used for materials, but it's money that you can couple with the value of the project. So we assign a real value on the project, but Oktibah is not paying for the labor and equipment, but we assess what the value of that project is. So our board, we brought a recommendation, the way the money was being pro-rata share was being placed into this account. If you were a county that joined thirty years ago, we were taking how much money you had spent to calibrate what your percentage of the cut was going to be. We got our board to change that this last executive and full board meeting. We are now looking at how much money the county has paid the year prior. So that's good for Oktibah because we have some counties that are not paying as much, but they were still getting a pretty large portion pro-rata share of the PLN fund. Oktibah is a larger county, it's got a larger tax base. So what you're paying in, the millage you're paying into our district, if our board puts more money in PLN, you're going to have a larger pro-rata share. Clear as mud, I hope that makes sense.
It'll always be based on the year prior.
Absolutely. And I said, we're not, we're not trying to be punitive toward the counties that have been here for a long time, but as things get more expensive, and y'all know, we're all dealing with budgets. So counties that are putting more money into the district, in theory, if we put more money in PLN, we're going to get a larger share. So I'm not trying to use that as a carrot, but it is certainly an incentive. Because at the end of the day, we are trying to run a very efficient organization, and we're trying to make sure that the money you put into this, you get a return on investment back. Lastly, we also do, every year you get, Oktibah County gets ten thousand dollars is earmarked on one July. It's use it or lose it by thirty June of the next year. That's the beaver and hog eradication. So not so much nepotism like you get in your brother-in-law, but you get a certified person who might be your brother-in-law. Somebody to come in to get rid of pigs or beaver that are causing damage. You pay for that, you send us the receipt, there's ten thousand dollars of benefit you've got on the fiscal year that you can use. Now, behind closed doors, how the county wants to do that, whether the administrator does it or you divide it, that's certainly on the county. It's not a hundred thousand dollars, but it's ten thousand dollars. So I know Randy Kelly gave me a call a few months ago, Union County is not a member. They were having trouble with the rail spur going into Toyota. And there was a beaver pond that looked like Taj Mahal of beaver ponds. But it was threatening the rail base. And we tried to help them find a federal solution and some other things. We couldn't help them. But that's a great example, if you've got your county on some sort of a maintenance cycle to watch the beaver areas, this money might help to, from a maintenance standpoint, keep some of that being in that. So you're very kind to let me give you my dissertation this morning, but that's, that's what we wanted to bring to you. And again, I'll open the floor if David or Don had anything to add. We truly do. Yes, sir.
It sounded like you were thinking, wanted to say something.
No, no, I'm good. There is a bridge. I will mention, Victor, you all learned from that about a month and just brought it. So we need to get some materials and what they actually on, try and get that repaired if you guys.
Sounds good.
Yeah, in closing, not here to have a hug fest, we truly sincerely want to let you know that we can't do what we do unless we have member counties. And I think we've got a really, we always joke that we're this purple spotted rainbow unicorn up here in northeast Mississippi, this agency that looks nothing like any other agency. But, you know, we want to make sure that Oktibah County is getting a return on investment. And again, as we try to, if you have a little more sophisticated approach to our system, we also don't want to jettison just that relational component, being able to talk to the county, hey, what do you need? And if we run into issues or we've got poor data on something, we'll clean it up. But we truly thank you this morning for your time.
What, Whispering Pines listed on there?
Whispering Pines?
That was already through the resolution process on the model. Remember, we met out there a month and a half ago.
I've seen, I've seen the email come through and all that. I don't think the resolution has been passed, I'm trying to remember, but I think the resolution's been passed. It may very well be in front of your board at this point, or maybe y'all even.
It could, and let me.
It's moving forward.
And I'll say this too, there is a little bit of an arduous process to get, to recon the land, to get the resolution. If it's over sixty thousand, my monthly executive board has to push that to the quarterly full board. If we can get through the process, because again, we have thirteen counties and everybody's got about ten to twenty projects pending. Once we can get it in cycle and Don gets the work order, we can rock and roll. The thing that, the two stalemates is the initial process, getting it, once we get the resolution, getting it through our board, then it's the easements. Because as you know, you may have a piece of land that's three generations from the original owner and there's fifteen cousins that own it.
Right.
And so, yeah, so that can be challenging, right? But once we, once we get the work order. Exactly. And you can, and there's no forwarding address, right?
Yeah, I don't think we're at the easement stage on Whispering Pines.
That's going to be my one question on the easement, is that the supervisor going out and getting easements or?
Every county's different. It is not, we do not control that process at Tom Bigby. So the supervisors presumptively, in different counties, do it differently. Some counties have one person earmarked to do that, or an attorney. Sometimes I've seen supervisors divvy it out and do it. So I think some of it's kind of the inner workings of how you want to do business. But at the end of the day, the county is responsible to get the easement back. And I didn't mean to go down this rabbit hole. But one of the things that we've found with our other, some of our other member counties, I've found projects in our files that are two thousand four, two thousand three, it's an approved project. It's just gone stale, or that supervisor's no longer there. And we have difficulty with mechanisms that we can push into the counties to keep it moving. We've toyed with, hey, how about an automatically rescinding a project if the county doesn't get us something in a year? That sounds good. But you may come back and go, wait a minute, Drew, you're about to rescind a project? Well, heck, you can't even get to the other projects that you've got approved. So we're trying to be very transparent that it's, we will work with the county however you want to do that. We, our board is toying with something that will help county and the district. We may get to a point where, kind of like Beaver and Hog Program, where you put money in, it's there for the fiscal year, use it or lose it. We probably need to get PLN on something like that eventually, because we've got to be able to make sure we can balance our books at the end of the year and stay within our budget authorities. But we also are open to anything that might help with the county to try to create some situational awareness of a pending project. We're talking to a company about possibly doing a little more of a digital approach. And I told them, forgive me, I'm from Grenada County, if you didn't duck hunt, you didn't eat. But I said, we don't need a fancy Veronelli shotgun, we just need a Moss Burger. We need something more than just a notebook and a piece of paper. Can you help us with something that would help us share data? What that may eventually look like would be that once a resolution and projects approved, our system might be able to push an email to the county every month, every quarter going, hey, this project's still pending, it's at ninety-three days. So we're trying to look at some internal mechanisms that might make, bring value to it, not create another level. But because what do you do? You step out of here and you got to go answer five hundred things and your phone doesn't stop ringing. So you're not thinking about the fifteenth easement that you got to get on the thirteenth project. So again, we're looking at some mechanisms to clear up my statement that's just going to simplify that and keep the timeline kind of available and top of mind so that we can strike on things that we can do.
Well, I can certainly say the Tom Bigby Water District has been extremely beneficial for Oktibah County. And, you know, I've got to, I've got to give some credit for us even being, being here. And it's because of these two gentlemen, it was a three-two vote to join this. I think after we joined, it was seen right away that we should, we should have been in this thing thirty years ago.
No, of course, I'm not trying to throw a gratuitous comment, but truly David Kennard and his leadership helped it because that was all before I got here.
Absolutely.
And I think it took us a little over a year or so to kind of get it perking and kind of get a level of.
But we started to see immediate, immediate results right after, right after we joined. So I did want to publicly thank these two gentlemen sitting here to my right for casting that vote to join, to join this. And I was the third vote. So, you know, it's been beneficial, we're still seeing benefits from it. It's just amazing, the type of skilled employees that you all have.
Yeah, there are. They can really get it back. Excavator and the gozer and torch welder. And Don, the third Don in that same thing. So thank you, guys. And I'll take that back to everybody. But again, thank you for the partnership more than, you know, we can't do what we do unless Oktibah is participating in that. And so if you need anything, let us know. And again, we'll get Richard out here. We always blame Richard if something goes wrong, it just makes it easier. But he senses best.
Let me say this, these are two new board members, so they were not here when the vote was cast. So I'm sure they would be in agreement with.
Not, no, not retribution either way. Well, I know you got a full docket. I appreciate your time, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Motion to acknowledge.
To move.
Motion by Supervisor Traywick, second by Supervisor Carver. All in favor? Motion passes unanimous.
Thank y'all.
Thank you all, thank you for what you do. Next on the agenda, we're still under presentations, we've got Dana Traywick, Mississippi Horse Park.
Yes, sir.
Good morning, how are you?
How are y'all?
Doing well, how are you?
Good.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Oh, absolutely. We're ready to hear from you.
All right, let's go. So yes, my name is Dana Traywick, and I'm the new facility director at the Mississippi Horse Park. So I appreciate y'all letting me come today for y'all to kind of get to know me and to talk a little bit about the horse park.
Ms. Traywick has a slide presentation behind you.
The field is us.
Okay. I'll hear you. No, I'm going to sit right here.
Okay. So as y'all know, the horse park opened in nineteen ninety-nine and was established as a unique three-part partnership of the city of Starkville, Oktibah County, and Mississippi State University. So what started as just those four metal buildings on a gravel road has really flourished and become a sought-after facility. With the paving of Port House Road and Hill State Boulevard, we are really now on the front row and really strive to set a positive first impression for those traveling in the town. With the help of this partnership over the years, we have really been able to expand the facility and to create a unique experience, not only for our community, but for those promoters traveling in the town to promote events as well. So with that expansion of the facility has come a lot of success. As y'all know, Brickley Miller ran the horse park for twenty-five years and is credited for much of these achievements. She was a go-getter that had a vision for the facility and she ran with it. With her dreams and the partnerships of support, she really put the horse park on the map. Our events have been featured in many national publications and recognized with awards that have competed against top facilities across the United States. One of the most notable awards is the Justin Boots Best Spitting Award. This is voted on by contestants that participate in the PRCA rodeo that is held every February. So these are, these are contestants that travel and rodeo across the world, and they have voted that our ground was the best in the southeastern circuit for seven years. So this is a huge honor and something that we are very proud of. So when Brickley announced her retirement last year, a lot of questions were raised of who would take it over? How would it continue to run and what direction would it go in? Because, you know, she was the horse park, and so you couldn't associate one without the other. So as you can imagine, that was a little intimidating for me to step into this role. And although I have to choose to feel, I want to assure you that I was trained by the best. I started with Brickley in two thousand eight before moving to Jackson for a couple of years for my husband's job, and then came back in two thousand fourteen and have been there ever since. So I've seen what it takes to keep the facility running strong, and I want to assure y'all that I want to keep that vision going and that momentum going. She instilled in me the value of this partnership with the city, the county, and the Mississippi State. And so I want to continue to work with you guys to make our community the best it can be. That being said, two thousand twenty-four was full of events. We had a hundred and fourteen days of activities, plus weekly drone classes taught by Mississippi State. Of course, we host the annual PRCA rodeo every February, and that is our largest spectator event. And that brings in thousands of attendees each night. And then we also have the contestants that stay on our grounds. And we do this in conjunction with the Dixie Nationals so that we can attract contestants to participate in both, our rodeo and their rodeo. And a lot of times, they stay on our grounds because they can count on us to be a clean and safe facility. And then, of course, we host a lot of different types of events. So we were kind of set up for livestock and equine events, but we host a variety of things each year. And a lot of them bring in a unique demographic that may not have would have traveled here otherwise. So we feel like we're, you know, a great amenity. So the team pinning competition and the archery competition were first-time events held last year. And they were such a success that they each booked two events to host in two thousand twenty-five. And so the archery tournament brought in over twenty-five hundred kids from across the state, and they expect that event to continue to grow. So that's a really good event. You can go back, go back, please. And then the Golden Triangle Kennel Club Dog Show in Mississippi, that's an annual event that we have that brings a unique group as well. And last year, they had thirty-two states and Canada represented at that event. Then the, down at the bottom left corner, that's the Lucky Dog Railway Race, that's an annual event that we have every year as well. Those promoters are from Arkansas, and they came about fourteen, fifteen years ago and moved their event to our facility, and it just exploded. They, it's got on there that there's three hundred and eight contestants from eleven states, but that doesn't include all of the people that travel with them, the staff, spectators that come. So we typically have about a thousand people on grounds for that event, and they stay on our grounds for about four days. And we're going to roll into football season where we host RVs for home MSU football games. And we've been told by many of the opposing teams that we are one of the best setups they've seen from across. So we feel like this is a great amenity that we have to offer. So the equine assisted services program moved back to the horse park last fall, and this is a program that promotes therapeutic riding experiences through educational and research-based activities. They'd been at the horse park, moved to West Point, and then came back, and we are so glad that they are back. They really heavily rely on volunteers, and so it's great for them to be centrally located so that they can attract Mississippi State students as well as other locals to be able to participate in this program. They have about three hundred and fifty people associated with this between their staff, the participants, and volunteers. So we are really glad to have them back. Another thing we always strive to do is make improvements and find ways to make things better. So we no longer have the big sewer chutes located in the center of the horse park, so, I mean, the harness tracks. So if you've driven by, you have seen equipment and dump trucks running in and out all summer. So that big ice shore is officially gone, so they have connected us to city and university sewers. So we are glad to have that. We've also worked on drainage around the, on the grounds, and then we'll take on a few other projects this fall to make some improvements. Another thing we strive to do is to track our numbers to see what kind of an impact we're having on the local economy. Of course, we see the value of the horse park, but it's always good to have our numbers to back it up. Brickley worked with Dr. Al Miles at Mississippi State University many moons ago, and they developed an economic impact template. But as you know, you know, things get outdated, and so it got harder to track our numbers. So I've reached back out to Mississippi State, and they have created us this updated economic impact template. So we will be able to start tracking our numbers for two thousand twenty-five. So that'll be a good tool that we'll be able to utilize to see what kind of impact we're having on the local economy. We do know that sixty thousand people come through our gates each year with ninety percent of our business traveling from ninety miles away or further. So we feel like that has to be doing something positive for the community. So as we roll into the fall and towards two thousand twenty-six, we will continue to strive to be the remarkable horse park that people have come to love. We've already got promoters trying to book dates for next year, and several new promoters wanting to move their events to the horse park as well. So the future looks bright at the horse park, but we can't do it without y'all's support. So we hope we can continue to count on you guys to help us grow and move forward and keep it rolling. I appreciate y'all letting me come today. And if you have any questions, let me know.
Appreciate it.
Thank y'all. Appreciate it.
Motion by Supervisor Traywick, second by Supervisor Little, then we acknowledge the report. All in favor? Motion passes unanimous. Now we are, now for Ms. Christina Suggs. Good morning.
Good morning.
To discuss, to discuss a gift problem.
Doing well, how are you? Good, I'm good. I really appreciate the opportunity to come and talk with y'all this morning about tax increment financing in general. I've talked with some of y'all, I've been trying to get in touch with some of y'all, but I know y'all are super, super busy. And so I appreciate the time. In general, tax increment financing is a way to shift the risk of developing infrastructure to a private developer. And I know many of y'all are probably familiar with this, but if it doesn't bother you, I'd like to go over what it is in general for just a second. What happens with a tax increment financing project is a developer seeks the assistance from the city and the county typically. And the developer goes in and builds the infrastructure. In this case, we're asking for help for a road. And once the developer has built the road, then the developer has to build the project. And when the project is completed, it should increase taxes, sales taxes, and ad valorem taxes. Only when those taxes are sufficient to reimburse the developer do bonds ever get issued. So the risk is shifted from the city, from the county, from constructing a road to induce development. For this private developer to come in and build the road, they carry the cost. And then if they never deliver a project, no bonds ever issued, there's no reimbursement. Or if they build a project that's less than what they anticipated, a smaller amount of reimbursement, if any, is what is issued. So it shifts any risk to the private developer to have to outlay the capital to provide the infrastructure first. With that in mind, we would like y'all's consideration in assistance with the road that's going to be off highway trail and that station road. And here is a little map. Now, there's some infrastructure on which we're not asking for assistance with. Oh, y'all may already have copies. Okay, excellent. What I'd like for y'all to see here is the blue and the red road area. These two areas of work will cost about two point eight five million dollars. What is the benefit to the county in assisting with this? Well, these two, the blue and the red, will assist in the development of a new home to suites in a five hundred and four bedroom student housing, five hundred and four bed student housing development. This will substantially increase taxes in the county and in the schools as well as in the city. And what we are asking for is, I would just like the board's consideration to see if y'all are interested in supporting the project. We have the city's support, and when the city was concerned that the county may not want to participate in the project, I know I have to. And so I needed to come and talk to y'all so that I know if I can go back to the city and say, hey, we think the county may be in favor. Not asking for a vote here today for contributions, but I want y'all to know what the scope of what the assistance is going to be. For this to work, if we can get the city and the county For this to work, if we can get the city and the county to go have these, we're going to need each to contribute around twenty-three, twenty-three six eight mils, which is about a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars towards bonds. Ideally, the bonds would run for a time of fifteen years. This money only comes from any increase in the adware taxes. And to do that, to raise the hundred and sixty-four thousand on the county side as well as the city side, the developers going to have to build this home two suites. And they're going to have to build out the five hundred and four room bed student housing development. Only when that money is sufficient to issue bonds, would bonds ever be issued. We're asking for assistance in the reimbursement for the blue and for the red, which are road projects. And I'd just like to see if anybody has any questions or concerns, anything.
You, you said twenty-three point six eight mils.
Did I get that wrong?
No, I, I'm just, that was in none of the information that was provided previously. So I'm trying to get my head wrapped around what the current proposal is.
Right. Twenty-three point six seven mils. I have not consulted with the city. The city originally agreed to around twenty-two mils. And I've talked to some of the supervisors with concerns and received blame about it being equitable, the city putting in as much as the county putting in. And twenty-three point six seven from both sides gets us there, assuming the developer does produce the project.
Yeah, um, my, my concerns on that are, you know, um, it's a, it's, you know, a city project. It will generate, you know, taxes, you know, for us. But, you know, as I said, you know, on, on the roads and sidewalks and that sort of stuff, you know, those are, are seen issues. So, you know, with the, see some numbers of where it was, were roads, you know, instead.
I have that. I don't have a printout.
Or, you know, you know, for where it was roads, so, you know, my, you know, I, I, you know, I'd like to, you know, see that instead of, because, you know, the road part minus the, you know, the infrastructure with the, like electricity and all that that goes with it, you know, that's all accounted.
Right. 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 So the blue part is going to be around ninety thousand dollars, give or take? Now, I don't know. I'm not sure what estimates y'all have. We have been refining estimates as the project has moved on. The blue part connecting to the highway is going to be around ninety thousand dollars. The road itself is going to be around two seven, but we have to deduct seventy-five thousand for sidewalks. So the road curbs gutter and the site prep for the road is going to be around a little less than two million, like one point nine-ish. I can't do the math in my head right now. Assuming the price, the price of concrete stays real. But I didn't, I didn't type it up for you, but I can type it up for you. I got the information from the engineer this morning that sidewalks are going to be about seventy-five thousand dollars.
What is the benefit? It says the city is at twenty-two point four six mils and the city retains all new sales tax and room tax revenue resulting on projected surplus of one sixty-two. And the county pledge is two hundred and six thousand annual. What would be our benefit from the projected sales taxes?
Um, the sales tax goes to the city.
The county pledges two hundred and six thousand.
The sales tax goes to the city.
Well, I'm actually.
We did it indirectly, but we did it through, sales taxes are component state aid. So we do get it indirectly, but we don't get it directly. Like I said, we don't get to keep that eighteen cents I guess out of every dollar that was sent.
That's correct. Yeah.
I guess it don't change, but with the new taxes, I guess that, but I guess it will change a little bit.
It wouldn't, it's a good job. So our request is actually a, a little more narrow than that, that's in there. Y'all are interested in providing that support. I understand that from talking to some of y'all, they're concerned about that extent. What we're basically asking for is about a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars in adware taxes each year once the project is built, not that much. And that's, that's assuming the city will match us. And I haven't talked to them. I want to talk to y'all.
Supervisor Carter, the information in your packet was what was presented prior to this proposal.
That's right.
Yep. So she's laying a different proposal on the table.
I am. I am. My apologies for that.
The question that I have is twenty-three point six seven that's coming out of the general fund, which is currently twenty-nine mils.
That's right.
Is that my understanding of the proposal?
Yes, sir.
Would there be any issues? And I'm just throwing this on the table. Um, with the village coming out of the road and bridge fund in order to fund this?
You know, I thought about that. I would say that's great. I would have to defer to the board attorney on that to look through the appropriate AG opinions. Because it's just going to road and bridge, I would assume it's okay, but I'm a lawyer and I'm going to testify. I can't give you an official opinion on that, not as your board attorney.
I'd like to make, make a recommendation or motion that, uh, Ms. Suggs, Mr. Wayne, Mr. Carter and also the city get together and try to see if we can get deals in there. Because right now, if you want to know what's going on out there right now, ride out there and see. And I think this has a lot of potential. So I'd like to see the board strongly take this under consideration. I know there's a lot of moving parts and you have a recommendation that you gave us and I don't know if you're privy to it now, but somewhere we need to just have a, somewhere to figure this out. But I think this, this can be really good for our area, in my opinion, based upon what's going on out there now.
Yeah, there's nothing going on.
Not much talent. Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
That they get together and try to figure something out.
Motion by supervisor trainer.
And then bring it back to us, yeah.
Second by supervisor Williams, that, that, uh, we ask our, our board attorney, county administrator, Ms. Suggs and the city of Starve. To get together with a joint meeting and, and see can we hash through this and report back to the board.
I'll say this, I, I've, I've got a long history of just probably seven as an alderman. I'm probably going to vote against this just for the benefit of, I've, I've seen both sides of it. Um, I, I don't think the county will, will have as much to benefit as the city in this, in my opinion. Um, so I, I will vote against that today. I think if this continued on, I just always like to have an explanation for why I vote against something. But I would like to talk to you further. I tell you, if, if this meeting were to happen, let's talk again after that. Um, so I, we turned down the Walmart gift and it came anyway. Does, does this developer have the capital to make this project happen without the city and county pitching in?
I'm glad you asked that. So we are now, and this is one reason I'm, I'm here in front of y'all. I started talking to the city and some of y'all back in Maine. And our development team is now at the point where they need to either move forward with support or pull the plug. And they've got, I've got twenty-five million dollars worth of projects in Florida, nine million in Montana, fifty-three million in the state from Olive Branch to Hannover. They've got other places they can spend engineering and design money and they've had the property for a while. They're happy to just leave it. But they're at the point. So, so they had told me they're prepared to just move on and let it sit for another couple of years. They tried to make it go pre-COVID, post-COVID.
Didn't it more of a student housing, it was a pool and an amenities area? And that might be different from this. Is that the same?
I think that is the same.
Last presentation I saw the city was.
The student housing will be over here. Now, this is going to be a public road. We're not asking for any assistance throughout the student housing.
So this road would come in behind Walmart and then go through Walk On and come back out to path station?
No, sir. It'll come in, it's going to have one out and one in. We don't have an easement here to build the road on down this way. I think Walmart's here. Here's Walk On. So the road's going to come in off path station. I'm going to approve parts of path station.
The new road working behind Walmart's not y'all. The whole grading that's been done back there or not?
Oh, no, sir. I'm not a workaholic.
Got a direct render y'all.
That's not, yes. Because I was told they were not working on.
Walmart's going to be able to fall over.
Oh, is that not Walmart?
Yeah, that, that's the hotel right here. And that, that's Walk On, that's the hotel. Now, this is the proposed hotel. That's Walk On. That's the La Kentha Gatsby right here. Walmart is going to be not even on the diagram.
Okay. I don't know what's going on down there. We tried to.
Walmart ain't even on his diagram.
We tried to.
That's not, that's La Kentha.
That's La Kentha.
Oh, okay.
We tried to get an easement across Mr. Jones's property to build the road, but we weren't able to.
Yep, just totally in and out through path station.
That's right.
Now, what may happen in the future, I don't know. But once the building happens, hey, it opens up a lot of other avenues.
So yeah, there's work going on south of us because we don't have rights to it yet.
But we don't have the, I guess, is, is Mr. Jones willing to do anything for that?
The last I talked to the development team, um, I thought something could happen. I, it's been up for months, something to go away from our relationship. He didn't have any, we spent a lot of money trying to get one. It didn't happen.
What's the, what's the projected type and number of jobs in this?
A hotel like this will probably bring in fifteen to twenty jobs. The student housing, I don't know. It depends on how automated they are. Usually about ten jobs. They're going to be administrative type, type jobs. And then of course, construction jobs will result from this as well. If you'd like additional numbers on the construction jobs, I can get them from the guys. They'll know exactly as a customer, they'll register basic industry standards.
And, and, um, we're not, we're not tall. I, I really think I've heard people, you know, look at the numbers of when, you know, like student housing hotels. We want hotels new and always work ten to give them. When I, when student housing new, it works ten more months. But after fifteen years, they will move on to something else. So it would be.
Right. So you'd like information on how it's appreciated?
That's the correct part of the question.
Uh, is the red, the red is within the city limit?
Yes, sir, yes.
And the blue is within the county?
I believe.
That's path station here.
I believe it's on the border. I think it is in the city.
I think it's all in the city. It's, it's out there pretty close, but it's all in the city.
After all this is over with in twenty-five years, who's responsible for up to?
I anticipate that the road would be dedicated. That's part of what happens with this is it gets dedicated to the city. Yes, sir. So when the bonds are issued, they file a plan and dedicate the improvements to the city.
But we just have to fix those roads if they're coming off path station and those other cities under control.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of setting up a meeting. Motion passes unanimous.
No, no.
Okay, we got four one, uh, to move forward with the meeting. Thank you so much.
Mr. Robert, do I get with you on your statement?
Yes, if you would send me a copy of what you proposed here today.
I, I might get an idea about how, uh, how many construction jobs that you envision is going to come out of this project.
Okay, so I can do it kind of off.
You'll have to give that now, but I just, I just.
I could give you my industry estimate, but since one of the developers is actually the contractor, I can ask him anything still better than my saying that industry standard is forty percent, blah, 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 you know. I can have that for you. Thank you. I appreciate the time.
So, can I get your information for the county attorney?
Sure.
And next on the agenda, we've got a veteran's affairs officer, Ms. Patricia Hopps. Good morning.
Good morning, good morning. Or supervisors, good morning to everyone.
Morning.
Okay, uh, see you got my regular report and I just want to point out a few things to you. I'm not going to read it all. But, um, I have picked up a lot of, uh, uh, veterans coming in and phone calls and all of this. So, uh, I have to stay in quite a bit later at times. Once you've got a veteran in there and you start, you start talking, I need to get all of his experience, what we need to put into the forms and, you know, one claim can have thirty forms. I need to get all of that together at that time. I'm not, his mind, I'm clear with what he's saying and everything like that. So I've been, having said that, I think looking down to our outreach activities, our resource affair, I think has brought more people in to, uh, it was a success that we had. I think I told y'all, uh, they write the flyers before, then we put that on in, uh, Mississippi State. And, uh, there was a lot of good attendance and where that's going to be an annual event. And I, I'm just, I thought the Memorial Day weekend events were, uh, by, very, uh, went very well. Did you supervisor Howard, you were there, I thought, for veterans, veterans day? And I, we had a lot of handouts and I got the people.
I think the crowd was actually larger this past year than I've seen.
Oh, yes, yes. Than last year for sure, yes. And on the second page, I just wanted to point out that the, thank you so much, board supervisors for allowing me to go to the, uh, national conference. It was, you learn so much there and you can network. It was an attendance. They had seating for, uh, over six hundred people, close to seven hundred with everything. And it is a very, um, it's, you just have a wealth of knowledge there. So I so appreciate and honored to represent, uh, Oktobal County there. And I just want to thank all of y'all for allowing me to go. And, uh, and it was a success and as you said, I got my certifications and, uh, continuing education. And we're going to have a Mississippi conference that's going to be going on at the end of, uh, September. And I have, uh, everything and, uh, and that's going to be in Oxford this year. I have, it's maybe Mississippi State next, uh, next year, but Oxford this year, let me say, maybe Starkville. Uh, and I attached everything that we have been doing in the back, as you can see. So, uh, let's see, and I'm getting a lot of, uh, uh, veterans calling me saying their claims have went through, uh, uh, they have been, uh, approved. So that makes you always feel good when those veterans and their families. And I do, I'm not necessarily consider it an honor to do this job and thank you. Is there anything that you have to, any questions for me?
I, I have a veteran who, uh, want to renew, uh, their BD form two four ten.
Yes, sir.
So should they come in your office for that?
Oh, yeah, yes. I've been, I have to do that. Mm-hmm. I have the form for them and I can do it in a couple of days if they're, if they've been in Mississippi. I have to go to Mississippi today. Okay. If they, if they live.
But they serve someone else in Mississippi.
Uh, but, but if they live in Mississippi, uh, uh, all the time when they enlisted and, uh, so I, we could do that for Mississippi and not the, uh, um, the archive. Because we get my, I do pass, I do that through. So just for some of the things.
That's an important call, isn't it?
Oh, I have to have it. Have to have it. Okay, so.
Any, any further questions from the affairs officer?
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Motion to the House, motion by supervisor Carter, second by supervisor Williams, all in favor, motion passes unanimous. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
And next on the agenda, we've got, uh, election commissioner, Mr. Dennis Daniel. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank y'all for having us. Uh, Dennis Daniel is here on behalf of our five election commissioners. Um, this past session, state legislature passed a bill that authorized a one-time election day only pay raise for election commissioners. Uh, be a thirty-five dollar pay raise, again, only on an election day. Uh, would take us from the current pay of one sixty-five to two hundred dollars for a day that y'all, who all know, where it's typically about a sixteen to twenty-hour day. Uh, of course, all raises have to be approved by the individual county. So we come before y'all, asking y'all to approve that.
Motion by supervisor Williams, second by supervisor trainer to approve any discussion?
Just take that opportunity. If y'all want to introduce yourselves or anybody associated with this, because I, we, we know you.
Well, I'm a riding district five.
I'm part of the Henderson district, woman.
Thank y'all. I know it's a substance.
Dennis Daniel's district three.
It is a tough day. Thank y'all.
We did everything, so we appreciate it. I got a text message from my assistant, so she expressed her support for it too.
She's getting some good training involved this week.
Any other discussion?
Are we moving in the voting precincts?
That, that's been done. Uh, all the letters have been sent out, all the paperwork and everything's been done. So it's set. So next election, which won't be until next year, we're not having one since November, all our new precincts are set. Now, as we've, we were.
That's your district.
Yes, yours was moved as well, yes. Uh, Nemo is back at Nemo. So, but as we feared, we've gotten about twenty percent, and I'd say close to, letters come back with bad addresses. So that's going to move many voters from inactive status to inactive status. So when they go to vote, if they go to vote, their name won't be on the rolls that day. So they'll have to vote out the date to get their status back active. Or come in between now and then and update their address.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, that they can come in between now and then, they can update that.
That's right.
How would those folks know?
We ran ads in both, uh, local newspapers. Uh, we've done social media posts. It's on the, uh, search for website now announcing that. Uh, and then of course, I personally talked to quite a few people and made comments about making sure your address is updated. Now, there's also a new system that just went into effect. Matter of fact, we're just getting started on some of it last week and this week where the state gets data on change of address. Like if you, if you move and you do a change of address with the post office or you take out a new credit card somewhere with a different address, those data is collected and sent to us. And it gives us a way to reach out to people and say, hey, is this correct? Have you moved? Do you need to update? And we're in the process of doing that now, sending out notifications.
Any other discussion? All in favor, motion passes unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Also wanted to.
I was actually about, uh, we, everything looks good up here, we had a little, a little dump site, uh, have you been, I haven't been there the last couple of days, have you?
All clean.
Okay, good.
This looks good, all that looks great.
Good, 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 we appreciate that.
Um, two of the other commissioners want me to, to bring back up too, we'll put this on agenda for another meeting, but just put it in your head. Also, the state legislature many years ago, uh, three or four years ago, authorized insurance for election commissioners. Again, has to be approved by the board, but we'll get.
When you say that, I mean, are you talking full-time or is that something, what do you mean?
I'll have to get a copy of the, uh, yeah.
It came up before.
Well, I mean, according to our eligibility requirements from Blue Cross Blue Shield, you have to be a full-time employee working at least thirty hours a week.
Yeah.
In order to be eligible for insurance, so.
We'll, we'll get you a copy of the bill, 'cause it was something that passed for election commission. I don't know. But we'll save that for another discussion.
The bill details Blue Cross Blue Shield what the eligibility requirements are, I mean.
I was just asked to bring that.
It would authorize us, provided we could do it, it gives us the authority, but not necessarily the contractual capability.
I'm just correct, that, that's exactly what occurred, that's what we, we faced in the past, the legislature approved it, however, there are contractual obligations. And that may be something that we navigate with our, with our insurance area, but I don't know if we ever, we ever checked into that at that point, just everybody heads up.
Thank you, Rob. Appreciate it, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Maybe we can put that item on the other list that we talked about involving, uh, the cover discussion we had, okay?
I've got some relation on that.
Okay. Maybe something you may want to add to that, just see.
No, I got one, I got one.
Oh, you got one, okay, okay. Well, next on the agenda, we've, we've got our tax assessor collective, uh, Ms. Joanna Walton, good morning.
Good morning, good morning, everyone. How's everyone?
Good thing you're here.
Good, I'm here to present a contract for, uh, my personal property, uh, deal person, uh, his conference for the body. That's from down. Uh, here recently, uh, a yearly, it's a yearly contract. It's a yearly contract, uh, that I have the option, well, to be for yearly or four years. My personal property guy is four years and the rental property is one year. With the previous guy that I had, uh, I went back and I looked at, uh, my audit findings and I lost, uh, quite a few points because at the time I couldn't make, make heads or tails of it. So now that I'm making heads or tails of it, um, the, the records are gonna all have to be reconstructed because I didn't know what was what. And this contractor that I found, uh, for personal property, uh, I sat down and I talked to him and I, and I, I, I made an agreement to understand everything that he does. And he's gonna meet with me and give me an explanation as to what's going on. I've done my research on him, uh, he has four counties and he's been with these people for over, well, one county in particular for over a very years. And I also called other, uh, counties to find out, um, about how many parcels they have, I did a, a, a comparison of what needs to be done. And when it comes to me and audit, I like to give you good standards with him. And I appreciate the work that I've seen, uh, talking to the other counties about what he does, so, uh, and this is the guy that I chose, uh, after doing research on a couple of them. And this is the contract that I want.
So this, this is for your personal?
Personal property deal, uh, yes, sir.
And you said that he's gonna sit down with you and?
No, I already sat down and talked to him already, so he's, he's.
About what's going on with currently, what happened, deciphering and stuff.
That's correct. That's correct, and what he's doing, he's gonna have to rebuild my entire, and I got this Barbara here, if you all, if something is going on, because, of course, she's helping me understand that process as well.
Okay.
But he has to reconstruct my whole entire personal property, uh, role of the renditions because I've lost too many points and I don't like losing points when it comes to audit. And I want us to give you good standards.
I don't know, this is way over my head, is this something that can't be done in-house or is this like a claim?
There is no way we can do this in-house.
We couldn't hire somebody who knew this was just.
And that's, that's what that contract is for, to hire, oh, you talked about for the county.
Yeah, like you're saying, I really don't understand this, and I wanna know, I guess, if, if this, we can't, this can't be done in-house, which is better to do.
That would be a decision that you all would have to make, but, uh, this is way, basically all counties can do it, they can have contractors and do it, because most contractors have multiple counties. And personally, I like that, so, so they can.
Field expertise, like see all the.
Exactly. And right now, we have about sixteen hundred, uh, personal property, uh, parcels, and with the way October County is growing, uh, and I wanna be in better standards than where we are now.
Mm-hmm.
With what I have downstairs.
Let's say, um, you say, is this like twenty-five percent done every year?
Yes, sir.
And then, um, as far as shifting liability, like, this may be a lot of question, having an independent third party go through our books and reshift all our personal property roles, is that, in audit time, is that something where, or is it be shift liability?
Well, I spoke to Rob about that, yeah, I spoke to Rob about the project, and, uh, he said, we're okay, we can, we can look at it, well, he, he's looking at it, well, he, he has looked at it. And, uh, I told him the same, basically the same things I'm telling you now, and so far, so, no, and this is one of the decisions that I made.
Rob, do you have any legal advice, anything we need to know, or just proceed?
The things that I think that we need to do is flush out exactly the, what the, the process is in terms of making sure that it's in the contract. I think she's gotten that plugged in pretty well, but, uh, I think what she's doing right now is giving permission to, or to, to flush four of these things out, make sure that we pin all that stuff down, is that fair, is that fair to say, Julie?
Yes, it is.
Like, if, if we give them permission to, uh, and see if we can get this all worked out, assuming that, that, that we are wanting a, a, a vendor to come in here and do this, which isn't a common, uh, trend, I mean, every county's been similar. Uh, we'll get better with that and, and get it done.
That, that's a lot of work to do in-house.
A lot.
It, it is an awful lot.
It's, it's, it's overwhelming, it's overwhelming.
That's right.
So this is why I'm here on weekends and, and thinking way, way after five o'clock.
Is this a new vendor or is this a renewal, I'm trying to?
This is a new vendor.
This is the new guy, I know we talked previously and I couldn't remember which.
Yeah, that is a new guy.
And this is Ned, Mississippi Appraisers Services. And what are the other four counties that he's doing?
Lee, Lee, Winston, and, uh, I can't remember the, Newton.
Newton.
Yeah, so these, these channels are similar to the size and, and where I am. And I'm looking at that work role.
Do you have anything that you wanna add to the discussion or?
Just that I really like this guy, I mean, he's, he's local, he's, he's thirty minutes away. We had trouble with the previous function, I can look back to his, the time of his action, write down the dates, like turn it all in, you know, maybe have my hair come off when I need to.
So just, just to, just to simplify this, this for me, your personal property appraisers are in challenge. It's hard to know what's going on with it, so you're getting pinged out of all this, just because it's not, and you need somebody to come in here and straighten this up, so.
And also that we will have time, that if something needs to be adjusted, fixed, or acknowledged and talked about, it could be done not five minutes before, Barbara has to turn this stuff in.
Sounds good.
And so he could, they, he, them, they, she, whoever, could give me a better explanation as to why do we, why are we doing it this way and how can we improve this?
Uh, we need a motion to authorize, motion by supervisor Carl, second by supervisor Williams, any further discussion, all in favor?
Alright.
Motion passes unanimous.
Okay, you have the original, that's the one that I need back.
Okay.
The one that I found already.
Okay. What you don't need?
But that's, that's, I can't hear Rob, I can't hear Rob.
Does this understand, please?
That's the question, that was all there was to be taken.
It has to be done, there's no way around it.
Uh, what's the motion on the table?
I thought we were. It's hard, Rob, to get the rest of that flesh out, isn't it?
Well, with the signatures on it, you execute it.
Yeah.
This is, this is the contract. Rob, what, what was this?
Joey, Joey, hold the contract, if, if you go ahead and get the signs, hold the contract till I get back, so that we can make sure we get you taken care of, definitely what you need.
Thank you.
Alright, okay. So, we don't, we don't.
So.
We don't, we don't, look, the contract is approved, but it won't be, she won't move forward until, uh, her, uh.
Thank you, Ms. Walton.
You're welcome. Anything else for our tax assessor collective?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Uh, I am getting ready for the, uh, land sale and, uh, if anybody has any questions, concerns, or anything, please, please, please come see me before, before this stuff gets started.
We're not selling any candy, probably.
We better not be.
Thank you, Ms. Walton.
Thank you.
And next we've got, uh, chief deputy Maurice Johnson, good morning, sir.
Good morning, good morning. First thing I'd like to tap is the, uh, request of entering to an agreement, uh, with the, uh, state department with the police inmates.
Come on. Motion by supervisor Frank, second by supervisor Little, any discussion, all in favor?
Alright.
Motion passes unanimous.
Any questions, some questions, go for some beauty. Okay, the second part is, uh, to, uh, force to enter to an agreement to be the whole state inmates, uh, we're attempting to allow the whole four to eight inmates, uh, that normally be in MDLC, these be low-level, uh, non-bonded offenders that we could have in-house to use as trustees.
So who? Motion by supervisor Frank, outside of that.
Instead of like, how, don't know the history, this, normal operating procedures, is this a?
There's some jails throughout the state that hold state inmates, and most don't, but you have some that designate the whole state inmate. And normally, those were skills like mechanical, um, electrical, uh, construction and things like that, that they can actually have in-house to eliminate some of the cost that, you know, those jails would have to, uh, use, you know, to get things fixed.
This the first time we've had a state inmate, or is this, do we do this every year?
No, sir, no, sir.
This the first one?
Right.
We did it pre-ten, right, and then they changed some rules, you have state inmates all the time.
Years ago, but they were not housed here as trustees, these right here, they simply have a fire license.
You're bringing someone in that's got technical labor skills that could maybe be used in-house to fix a toll or?
Oh, you'd be everywhere, anywhere, you'd be surprised.
It's, it's been done before, like, we have many people that we hired that were inmates and they went on to become a county employee.
Sure have, retired.
Real good.
Yeah. Lively, just continue for a set number of years.
Well, you know, with stuff changing in the state, reimbursing costs, you won't be giving any money for them.
Right.
But we'd be utilizing their skills to support county.
And that, that's a lot of skill for individuals.
Yes.
That we could be using in the county to do various things.
Right.
And I was wondering too, could they, like, they use in other agencies, so they don't have to necessarily work.
Right, of course, we have to have some to watch them all the time.
You watch them, but they can be working with another agency too as well.
Be responsible for it.
Yes, sir.
There's been somebody that has started as a trustee, become an employee and retired.
Yeah.
It's also rehabilitation program.
Right, and see, you know, some, some places won't hire you because of your personal history, but I'm thankful that our county, uh, has not held that against people who have had some limitations on that, but now some people will. But thank, that's one of the things, that's more, that's a benefit of being here in Octavia County.
It turned out to be great work, still.
It has, I mean, it's been a great event. I mean, I'm not saying everybody does wrong, not everybody does it right, but I, I do know some that were down there and they were, they retired from Octavia County. Matter of fact, one person in particular, he passed away. He'd been called, he, he ultimately retired and called the labor to the war.
So we're not looking for jail four.
If they, if they work on vehicles and all that kinda stuff, and I can see where they might be a danger.
We need them, they just sitting up there with the state that not using their skills. Uh, of these individuals already housed, are the possibility of some that already would stay.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, yes, sir, pretty much would be the select, uh, request that they be housed in Octavia County.
I like that, I like that. Any further discussion, any other questions? You look like you're ready to ask a question today.
Are you ready? For the pressure.
I don't wanna get carried away, so I have some things I should be asking. You're like, you did what?
Uh, all in favor? Motion passes unanimous. Thank you so much.
Appreciate, appreciate how you're doing.
And next, next, uh, we've got, uh, our road manager, Mr. Carter, good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
What, too pretty fast? Uh, uh, first, we have the road manager report.
I make more weeks of road report.
Motion by supervisor Trina, second by supervisor Williams, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Alright.
Motion passes, unanimous.
Uh, next, we have a, we put out the bid for a Minitrako. And we had two bids to come in on that machine. Uh, we had one from Thompson Machinery, it come in at a hundred and forty-seven thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty-eight cents. We also had one that come in from, uh, from John Deere, scribbling equipment, and it come in as the lowest bid. Uh, let's see, can I get to that?
One thirty-five, one hundred and thirty-five thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars and seventeen cents.
Yes, sir. Okay, uh, now, let's get to the, they, even though they were the lowest bidder, they didn't meet the bid specs on several, uh, items of that machine. Uh, and I think you would have in your package.
We did.
Uh, a recommendation.
You see, y'all did some, some really good investigating, identifying those issues.
Well, yeah, we, we.
Actually, it was pretty obvious, I mean, they did bid a lesser machine than, than we had in our spec. And, and the sad thing was, they had a machine that would've met our specs, but it would've been more expensive, which is why they chose to bid the lesser machine. With, with my inter, that, that's kinda what I suspect anyway, wouldn't it?
Motion for approval for purchase of Thompson Machinery. Motion by supervisor Williams, second by supervisor Little, any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes, unanimous.
Alright, uh, and, uh, just to reiterate on the, on the, uh, as I pass these out. To reiterate on the, putting down the, uh, material, uh, I just wanna say that through y'all's help and, uh, fire department, uh, we were able to, uh, we were able to go out and use a water truck that we, we built in-house from one of the fire trucks, and it, it really came in handy. And, and, and getting our road wet enough for that material to react like it should, so, it just goes to show you, if you put a little work into it, you can get what you want. And, uh, it is a real good truck, it worked out real good. It took a little bit of thinking to get everything like we wanted and keep the cost down, but we did, and it worked out just as well as the one we paid a lot of money for. Uh, in front of you, I think if everybody got one, uh, this is our August schedule. Uh, this is what we are planning for August, and we're trying to get that threshold. And I want you to keep in mind, this is just the project work, it's not the, uh, other work that we gotta do, we got some covered, covered jobs that we gotta do along with this. But this is the project work that we, we, we wanna get done this month. And it's just something for you to look over, if y'all have any questions, if you did not hear, give me a call and we'll try to answer anything that you got out there.
This is kinda what, back to the July twenty-fifth minutes that we adjusted this morning, already is, uh, doing all at neighborhood at one time, while it's back to the original motion, it looks like a big wood lake valley, Valley Lane on the twenty-fifth.
Yes, uh-huh.
We're gonna add in time water unless we.
Yo, yeah, yeah, I, I mean, I, this was. Yo, yeah, yeah, I, I mean, I, this was, this was something I had to get ready this morning. But, uh, but, yeah, it's, it's gonna include, it, it's gonna include those little short, though. Yeah, I just listed it. Yeah, yeah, we just listed it. Yeah.
Makes sense. I see you got, I see you got some, okay. Um, yeah, I'm impressed with this, you got some, uh, I see not all of them, about the only two, uh, that do. Is that a way to, uh, lean a bit on that four-year road plan for, uh, three turns?
Yeah.
Is that a way to build that road, or you don't have to pave?
We gonna try to work, we gonna try to work that, I want my, what, and, and let me explain to you what, what have to, how we have to do this. Uh, Sturgis Maven Road laying down the shoulder, that's gonna, that, that requires me to use new construction and paving crew to do that. Uh, and, and what it means, what it amounts to is, I gotta have those crews in order to, to make that work. I gotta have paving crew, I gotta have those operators, I gotta have those operators to, um, I gotta run that machine as well as a motor grader, as well as packers, as well as, uh, work traffic, which it takes about three people at least to work traffic on a high-volume road like that. So that's what, that's what we'll work on the first part of this, this month, is trying to get these roads laid down. Uh, and like I said, those are high-volume roads, we have to, for the safety of the traveling public, it's, it takes a lot of people to do that.
You're looking fifteen or twenty people, when?
Well, at least, at least ten people.
Riders and.
Yeah, you got the graders and your, and your packers, and we gonna try to run two rubber tire packers, and so we won't have to be back and forth on that so much. We'll be running the lay-down machine, it takes a couple of people to run that, as well as truck drivers, you gotta have your truck drivers there. And you gotta have someone on the loader loading those trucks when they load up. We, uh, stockpile, uh, we're working stockpile material in Sturgis, uh, to start that project, we'll start on that end. Uh, and then, uh, uh, I gotta work on trying to find another location for trucks to stockpile.
I'm just wondering if you come in from eighty-two, some of that.
Yeah, I, I need to get in touch with that, that person and try to.
Get maybe material there.
Yeah. I need to get in touch with them to try to get some on that end. The closer we can keep those ten-wheelers to us, the better it'll be, the faster they can get back, back to us. At the same time, we'll have a few trailers bringing in material, dumping it, and, and the loader man piling up. It takes, it takes a bit, bit to get, you know, to make an operation like that run, it's, it's not likely.
Can I ask a question, gonna be my first, and that, and I know it takes a lot, remember we were talking about that road, but any road, if that was something we could put on a contractor, would that be better for us?
It, it, that should have, but it, 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 it went through the loophole, so it's something that we gotta house.
As a board, I would say make sure we, if we're getting the road done, if whatever we can take out, get back, I know you've got enough tree cutting and lemon and everything else, and, um, go.
I, I do wanna say, uh, Mr. Collins, I appreciate, look like you put some thought into putting the schedule together, you spread it, you've got the work spread around throughout the county. Uh, and this, this is, this is real helpful, we understand that way more work than you can do at one time, but, but I do appreciate this schedule.
And so.
At least got an idea of, of.
And then, uh, and I wanna say this, uh, not cutting y'all's soup, no.
Don't, don't go yet.
Uh, but when we roll, when we roll into South Gate, we'll be working on South Gate and Wooton at the same time. I can split then, because I don't have to have new, the new construction guys to, to work on that. Uh, I may have to go in and, and do some of the motor grader operating to, on that end project, where we gotta do a little grinding. But I'm, I'm just trying to lay it out where I can utilize my people in the best way to make it efficient, so we can move down the road. And that's, that's what we're doing. And, and Supervisor William, yeah, we gonna, after they leave Wooton, they will be coming in to, to, to get that other road done.
I'm impressed, that, that, uh, that's a good layout, a good layout and, uh, just a lot of work.
It is, it is.
I commend you for being able to, uh, to do this.
Well, we gonna, we, we gonna try to hit the ground running, uh, I was hoping we got started today, but it, with the misty weather, it kinda threw us for a loop. We gonna try to get started on laying down, uh, on Sturgis Maven Road, cause we got quite a few places on that road that water is starting to affect it. It's actually running off the pavement and running down beside the pavement and putting some washes in there, so we wanna, we wanna try to get, get that taken care of.
Mr. President, may I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. The, the road manager, y'all are right, has done an excellent job, and I know the answer to this question, but I've had a couple of, of, of your constituents ask, ask this question in open. When we build our county roads, we build our county roads to our county standard, is that a fair statement?
I would say that is, that is a more than fair statement, that we build our roads to county specifications. And oftentimes, they actually exceed, uh, the, the county specifications and, and, and go more towards state aid, uh, standards. Uh, with our SOI cementing and, and things of that nature, so we, whenever we build a county road, it, it, it reaches, uh, to county standards and above.
Thank you, I appreciate it, I just wanted to ask that question in open, so that, that we could get the answer out there.
Absolutely. Thank you for asking.
Uh, should we get in touch with client for the striking, uh, this, uh, you communicated with, with the possibility of striking some of these?
Okay, let me get, uh, my fair, and I've had a, a, a striking company contact me, uh, concerning that. But, uh, I'm, my thing is, I, I think we need to go ahead on and get everything that we gonna pay this year, get it paid. And then, uh, I'll come to the board with a recommendation, and I'll list all the roads, uh, that you all wanna strike. Uh, my, uh, I feel as though on, on some of the county roads and some of the subdivisions, I don't, I don't know if they want, really want stripes in those. Yeah, I don't, well, a lot of times, they just don't want the, the visibility of a stripe in it, because they count on, if you notice, most of the city streets don't have stripes in it, that's in, in the subdivision. And that's because they just, I'm, I'm recommending that stripes out on a more broken road, not the smaller roads that's in, incorporated into the, into the subdivision.
Yeah, that's.
Off subdivision, yeah.
That's what I was, I was thinking, that, that's what I was thinking, coming to heavy traffic.
I think they're more, more unified to be within the heavy traffic roads and not within the streets that's just tucked away into the subdivision.
All along, man, we just got resurfaced, it's been a little thin, thin overlay, super thin, but it's not striped at all.
Yeah, well, that's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm talking about. If you, it, stripes kind of pitch out when they, yeah, when, when you stripe them. And a lot of times, they just like for those streets to kind of lay, lay out, and it's not a whole lot of traffic, and most people are courteous enough to move over in them and let the, you know, we may put stop bars at the end of them, but I think that's, as far as we need to go is on the individual subdivisions.
Okay, while I've got you, y'all seen this technology that the P D D has, it's like a hundred and fifty dollars a mile, and you can, they grade A, B, C, D, E, all of them, oh, have you seen that?
Yeah, we did.
It's amazing, that's the first time I looked at RTG roads the other day, but it was, uh, something that just, we can utilize if we had that built into our, so I'm just making sure you know all about it.
We do, and, uh, that's, that's just one that we need to really consider doing something with. I was, I did not know, and I did some work out there for an individual, uh, the other day, and I did not know RTG road was heavily traveled like it is. Uh, I mean, for, I was down there and everybody, I guess, that, on this lower side of the county that works over at the plant, they use RTG road. And I was working out there.
I bet there's more people on that road than there is on one of you to.
Cars were backed, took back on that road. I mean, it was just, they was just one car behind the other for like two hours, then it slowed down, then later on it picked back up. So it, it, it is a very hea, I see why it's in the shape it is, because it's really heavily traveled.
And I wanna ask, like, more building, you know, like our, like the county roads and stuff, even some of them, like, I've looked at some of the little subdivision roads and stuff, some of them, you know, that we've taken over, like, how, how wide, I mean, the standard, is it?
Twenty feet.
Twenty feet?
That's what, that's what we had, about twenty feet on, twenty feet on the pavement.
On the pavement?
On the pavement, uh, about thirty feet, twenty-five to thirty on the width of them to the, and the ones that got curves, it's a little different.
That's what I was, that, that's what I was asking, cause I think.
Yeah, the ones that got curved, they, they only took just, I think we took it back to curve. And one that supervisor, uh, I did not know that was a county road, and we had the issue with the box on it, which it has been repaired. Uh, but I did not know it was a county road, and I think I was the first person that turned that person away. I did not know it had been accepted.
Well, I think we got Toby squared away on that, I'm, I need to go back and double check the, the road.
We just need to update our map.
County road is to make sure it's on there.
It's, it's, it is a county road, and the issue that we had was, uh, somehow one of the boxes that drained out, water overflowed, and it raised the concrete up. And, and how it happened, I don't know, the person that repaired it said they did not anchor the box, the steel part of it, and wa, water has a lot of power. It raised that steel box up and the concrete along with it, but we, we, we did get it fixed.
So the cost? Yeah, an emergency cross drain repair, y'all put out the precast out last week, off of eighteen wheelers. Do you know what date that is, or I need to put something out, are they gonna shut down New Lake Road?
Uh, give, it, we gonna try to work it in at the first of next month, and I'll, I'll give you a listing on when we gonna do that one. And, uh, and, uh, I'll give you a call on when we gonna, the first one we gonna do is the one over on Self Creek, and then we'll come to that one. That one right now is in good shape, we just wanna get it done before we start getting real heavy rain coming. And I, I'll let you know soon.
We're a month out, I mean, we got some cones up and everything, these are big precasts, they dropped off last week and.
We unload them and.
That, that's fine, I just know people like to know the roads when you shut down three days.
Yeah, we gonna, I'm gonna give you a good, at least a week and a half notice on it.
That's fine.
And then we'll, and I'll give you a notice on Self Creek also.
Rob, what's?
Uh, we got, in fact, we got about five curb cross drains that we got on our list to put in. So we're gonna be working on those, uh, as well. Uh, sometime we run, we run shop on machines to work on, but, uh, we gonna, we gonna try to our best to get it worked out.
Did you say they had to get off?
Stevenson Road, did you have a chance to get out there and look at that gate situation out there?
Yeah, uh, we aware of that, Supervisor Williams, aware of it. Uh, it's cattle gap, but it's, the cattle gap failed, it filled in, so that's why they went in and put a gate there, because the cattle gap failed. But it is across county road, and the people have somebody that rented in there now, and, and, and they wanna do something about that gate, so.
They don't seem to mind the gate, they just want the road worked, and if they gonna put gates up, I don't know how you get equipment, you know, in and out of there, and, you know, to kind of keep the road maintained. But you can't block county roads, I mean.
So that's gonna be a issue where we. That's gonna be where we gonna have to, uh, my thing is, my take on it is, we can go in there with a grader, and the driver don't close the gate behind it.
Yeah.
And the cows get out, then it makes us liable, so.
Well, then somebody get hurt, or.
So.
Uh, Supervisor Little, did you wanna discuss just a little bit about possibility of maybe hiring, uh, some, some grass contractors, grass cut contractors to, uh, take care of some areas in the county that might need a little bit more delicate cut, you know?
Yeah, that, yeah, I, I'd say, I'd say something to, um, you know, to, um, our road manager, um, about it, cause there's some areas, you know, we don't have the face machine with the arm or any of that other stuff, but some of them, we, if, is, is it possible for us to explore that option?
It is.
To, um, you know, to, to get, to kind of go around, cause I know you said we need to look at the areas to see.
Yeah, we need to look at the areas, some places, I, I hate to carry a tractor into, and, and, and I'm gonna tell you, one of the places, uh, we, we, we went in, I hated to go into, and I don't know exactly, is in your area, in Sunset. We take tractors in there, and then we have a little chiller running behind the tractor down the road while the guy was cutting. And it's, I've seen stardos come out from under the bush hogs, I've seen automators come out from under, where people have worked on the cars and threw this stuff in the ditch, and if that bush hog hit them, it's gonna throw them. But i- it's, I, you know, that's something that we need to look at, trying to, you know, maybe utilize a contractor to go in and help keep those neighborhood roads that is not in a yard area, and we'd have to go in and identify them and, and kind of, and see what we need to do, uh.
Cause I know, especially like in some of our highly visible areas, when you're coming into town, and, you know, you're going up and down some of the streets, like, we get, you know, we've cut some of the, the higher stuff good, but ride around the, the big poles and stuff, they eight feet, you know, it's eight feet tall. And I know we can't do that everywhere, but I mean, and maybe we could if we had the.
Well, no, it, it'll be like, between a house, there, where a person is not taking care of it, and it'll, it's, it'll be an area in that is, that'll grow up. And, you know, that's, that's, that's what she's referring to.
Do we not have county, must we not have county employees that can run the X mark, and we here and? Or what, what's the benefit of?
We don't have, we have a Thursday market, we, well, X mark, I know we got some weed here.
Yeah.
So we, we getting into more, or either have to look at a landscape company giving us a proposal, or going some of that stuff to be, and it may be safe, because like you said, if we going in with a tractor, we never miss that. You could have hired a landscape company to do it better, a better job, and they give reliability, it may be done.
But I mean, you know, just to, my thinking is, is to, to sort of purchase equipment and, and manpower and things, just for, just for a seasonal. It may be better to look at, you know, maybe contracting, looking into a contract, something like that.
And, and to, 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 uh, follow you on what you're seeing, when you go in and hire five or six people, and then you expect me to find something for them to do in the winter time, and it just, you know, you cut, you, your moles are not running now, and you gotta find something for them to do. And they may not be able to operate equipment, and now you got a bunch of people in the winter that you either got to lay off, or you gotta find something for them to do. And you gotta, and that all, every time you hire two people, you can look at a vehicle, you gotta buy a vehicle for them to drive. You gotta, you know, if you're gonna buy five or six lawn mower, you gotta have a couple of trucks pull those, those, those around, so it, every time, everything requires more.
Yeah.
So if you, if you contracted out, that's, that's two vehicles you ain't got to buy, that's three or four people that you ain't got to find something for them to do.
Well, it is all your own, just to be in retirement, it's, blue jaws, blue shield, there's so many things that just.
Yeah, and sometimes the companies do come in and knock it out, and it's not like it's gonna be something ev, you know, every week to do, or every other week to do, but.
It, it, yeah, it's, it's a, it's something that, uh, every couple of weeks, uh, once a month on some stuff.
Heard Matt's been going up to nineteen.
So what would be wrong with us letting Victor get some folks from the landscape come, come, and just look at, I'm using Sunset for this thing. And just say, we want you to go in Sunset, cut the, cut the, cut the county right away, and whatever he does, they just see what kind of, fully get on something like it, just look at that, just, I mean, you know.
Yeah.
But now, really, in all of these neighborhoods, though, you all know, when you get in these neighborhoods, dealing with these people with these flowers and these tractors and going, I mean, you know, cause a lot of people want their property to look a certain way. And a lot of times, they chest eyes up because they want the county property to look a certain way, and I, I don't see anything wrong with that, cause it makes the county look better. But when you go through there with a big tractor, and you trying to cut grass, and you sit up there in the air, and you go through there and cut a root across somebody's yard, try and cut enough grass you cut with a push mower, that just don't make sense.
I know, or else they get all, all grass green and nice right here, and then this is dead, and then it's nice green, and that's.
So we got a lot of problems like that if you want to come back.
Step right away on the other side, on the other property across the road, and lo and behold, them, them fellows will run that darn tractor through there, and I'm like, I'm keeping it moving, why, why do you feel the need to run it up?
That county grows, I think.
So, so, so that's something, uh, I don't know if, if it's worth delving into for this season, but for sure next season, but maybe, maybe looking into it this season.
Yeah, we need to, we need to get out and, and, and just kind of make a footnote of, of everything we got, and then.
Identify some areas. Identify some areas.
And then, and identify areas and, 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 uh-
If we gonna do it, I think we oughta do it with some serious planning, I mean, let's define it exactly, you know, from one spot to the net, you know, define it and then let's put it out for bid and let's, you know, let's do a, a good job of it, write a good solid contract where we can hold them accountable to their performance and, and that kind of thing.
And you don't have to have the same benefit all the time.
If you don't, no.
That's right. And you can put a variety, we got some of them, people around here, get the landscapes, get whatever that, that's capable of doing. But we have somebody to do the landscaping here in Colorado, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Same rent?
Fact is, it's four.
Okay, I'm satisfied with what they do, so that same rent?
Put them out, put it out, like I said, identify-
Maybe we won't be putting out flowers. We, we, we-
Yeah, I don't know, man, I'm like a flower, so.
I think that was a good discussion, uh, to add and, and, uh, if we got some things moving forward. Anything else on road management?
That's gonna be it.
Well, not one that collapsed the cover, I was thinking about that.
Yeah, yeah, I, I addressed that with them this morning and we're gonna take care of it.
I think we can pull it up.
Yeah, I think we can pull it up or either, or either cut that section off of it. One or the other, we'll get it open and just say, if it's too bad, it, we'll, we'll have to pull it out and put one in. We'll get a second pair, idea addressed.
They can just pull it up this week and next week, because that's why it's already backing up.
Yeah, we, we'll get it up.
Mostly except for old man, you support?
We always get it, we always get it.
All the name, most of the masses, whatever. Uh, because everybody's doing, if not, we've got a couple of new, uh, newly promoted employees, uh, for October Hall County. One is, uh, uh, EMA, newly promoted, EMA director, one is a newly promoted, uh, communications, EMA communications director. Uh, would you all like to come up and speak to the board, uh? I, I've even been sitting, I didn't know if you came for a particular reason or something.
Is it okay if I stand right here? Well, good morning, board.
Oh.
Uh, go, go ahead, go ahead, sir. Uh, just wanna say I really appreciate the, the gracious opportunity to be able to serve in the capacity of the emergency management director for October Hall County. Uh, just so you know, uh, I'm all about training. I am all about moving things forward and I am very hands-on. So when I give you a call, don't ignore my call. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Uh, but thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to not only serve this board, but the citizens of October Hall County.
Thank you so much for being willing.
Thank you very much.
Uh, hey guys, uh, for those that don't know me, I'm Tyler Gray. I was just appointed ACC director for October Hall County. I've been here for the past ten years. I worked in dispatch along with Jarvis, who's actually my trainer when I was in dispatch ten years ago. So me and him have worked together for, you know, the past decade. And we'll continue to do that, uh, especially living in the same house, so to speak, uh, still right next door neighbors. So me and him are gonna be, uh, spearheading both of you, you may side out and I'm on side of the house. Um, you know, working together for, during as many projects as we can accomplish. And, uh, I just want to, uh, let y'all know kind of what my plans are, out, you know, from the outset. Uh, we currently have three slots that need to be filled in our dispatch center. So I'm looking to get those slots filled, uh, as quick as possible. And, um, me and Jarvis will be, uh-
These are three existing positions, right?
Yes, sir. They're, they're existing. Uh, so we're looking to get those filled pretty quickly and start training on those guys. We got football season coming up, so it's gonna be, uh-
Interesting time, it's gonna be quite a transition.
But, uh, looking forward to it and I appreciate you guys for giving us an opportunity really.
You both came out of recommend, we're looking forward to, to growing in the future and expanding, uh, going forward. Uh, we, we, we've been requested to take a little short break. Is that feasible?
Yes.
Okay, we'll take a five minute break.
You're set.
We are now back in session. Uh, we're now down to our, uh, County Administrator, Mr. Carver.
Um, good morning. Got a few items here. Hopefully we can move through them fairly quickly. Um, start off with item number one on my report. Uh, it hasn't been about a month ago, this board, uh, in its wisdom approved the, um, the governing documents policy. And along with that came, uh, the implementing guidance, which was a white paper that accompanied that. And it talked about the ordinances and the policies and, you know, how we were gonna keep up with that, manage them, number them, all of those kinds of things. I'm coming to you today with, um, with two ordinances. Uh, the reason I'm choosing these ordinances that I would like to kinda get put into place is, um, number one, the personnel management ordinance, we've, we've discussed kind of a vision for a position classification policy. And in order for me to move forward on that, I'm trying to put in place an ordinance that provides the authority to begin building that, uh, that position classification policy out. And so this personnel ordinance is, is my attempt really to just codify state statute, right? It's not really anything new. It's just state statute. And what we're currently doing is what I'm trying to get codified in an ordinance. So I would entertain any questions that you have. I gave an executive summary. I gave a copy of the ordinance. I will tell you that passing an ordinance requires public notice, requires an opportunity for public comment. I put in there a timeline to facilitate all that and, and I would entertain any questions you may have on this personnel ordinance.
That's good. I make a motion. We accept your recommendation.
Motion by Supervisor Trina, second by Supervisor Little. Discussion.
Yeah, I have a question, man.
Yes, sir.
On Article, uh, uh, that would be four, Article four, section of the county administrator. I didn't know what discharge, did discharge mean to terminate?
That's correct, sir. Yes, sir.
That's terminated. Um, this section of, uh, may search without prior approval of the Board of Supervisors. Um, I would think that that still had to come before the board as a payroll change.
It would have to be spread upon the minutes, but what I put in here is simply a regurgitation of the law. Of the state statute. In other words, I'm, there's nothing in here that is con- in other words, this is what the law says. This is not me trying to usurp the board's authority. I would certainly not wish to do anything contrary to the board. And you would certainly have all personnel actions, whether it be terminations higher than any other of the minor items that y'all chose would have to be spread upon the minutes.
Right. Normally it comes before the board as a payroll change.
And it still will.
Yeah.
But this is just how the law reads and, and there's reasons for it. If you get to studying back in nineteen eighty-eight when Ray Davis and, and all of the, uh, Anti-Corruption Act and when all of the unit system was put in place. That's kinda what's driving this language, but it's, it's statutory stuff that's coming straight out of nineteen dash two dash nine.
Right. And I didn't have any problems with anything else, like suspension or something like that, or discipline them or.
It's a real generic thing, but what it does is it, it, so an ordinance, um, gives the public rights and it, it, uh, puts obligations on county employees. So that's why this needs to be in an ordinance form. And then the next stage of this thing will be the policies that underpin it, which will be the rules of the road, so to speak. The rulebook of how the county is actually gonna do business to comply with this, this ordinance. So they're getting these two ordinances in place. This personnel ordinance is gonna be what allows me to move on to the position classification system. I mean, policy, the employee discipline policy, updating the employee handbook for some of the items that y'all have, um, recognized as shortcomings. The safety pol- I mean, there's just a number of policies that will hang underneath this that this provides authority to.
Thank you for clearing that.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion?
Your timeline for approval. Uh, I'll have it back to you on August the eighteenth, provided I can get all the newspaper publishings and the public comments. And then thi- this is just the first reading. I'll submit to you any public comments that, that come in and we can consider a potential revision or whether or not we wanna pass it on the eighteenth of August.
I wanna say this publicly, uh, just, I really enjoy the way that you put this packet, the packets and the white papers and things that I'm, I know it's a lot in depth. And so for us to get these little, to get a, you know, it's, I just wanna tell you that I, I, I appreciate enough of my work and quantifying all this and moving this ball forward. Uh, is there much else I want to say?
Here we go.
It's been motion and second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. You're done.
And in the same thing as the personnel ordinance, you guys authorized me to, um, explore and to, to enter into contract with, uh, the, um, Civic Plus, uh, Meetings and Agendas module, right? And so what's gonna come from that is I'm gonna have to develop a policy that tells how we're gonna do our meetings and prepare our agendas and all that kinda stuff. So to get ready for the development of those policies, I presented to you an ordinance which gives me the authority to do that thing on your behalf, uh, which would govern our, our meetings. And again, it's primarily regurgitations of the Open Meetings Act. It's, it's a, an attempt to document what we currently do. Now, I have worked really hard on a policy and I hope y'all are gonna like it that talks about how we, um, conduct these board meetings. And so that's coming, but before I can present that to you, I kinda need the, this as an authoritative document to hang those things underneath. Um, but I'm excited to, to have a, a policy that governs how we conduct these meetings, how the agendas and timelines and all of those things, uh, are gonna come in and, um, but this is the fir- the necessary first step to get that authority.
Motion for approval. Sir.
Uh, motion by Supervisor Williams, second by Supervisor Trina. Any other discussion?
Uh, section fourteen says within seven days you'll have a public records officer send you an FOI type. Does that, do you typically?
Well, in accordance with the current county policy, the county administrator is the Public Information Officer. And according to the Public Records Act, we have seven days to respond to an initial request for public information. So that's just codifying what's already kinda in practice.
The board of president got a request, FOI or something, public records he can.
It would need to come to me. I'm the appointed authority in the county according to policy. Now, the ordinance, we don't have an ordinance in place at this point. That will be part of this, so.
We get all kinda calls about public records and this.
That, that doesn't necessarily mean that you've gotta provide information in seven days. You just gotta respond.
I have to respond in seven days and I have to give them an estimate of how much it would cost and, are the records even available? Or, or, or is it even legally permissible for us to give them those records? Because in many cases, it may not be.
Absolutely.
And, and the, the, the Public Records Act has some, some pretty nuanced language in it. We don't have to create records. They're entitled to records that exist. They can't ask me to prepare some fancy report that they may want to see.
Right.
I, I can, I'm only required to give them records that exist, not create records.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. You're done.
Um, item number three on my report is the participation in the, uh, another settlement with another organization. The, um, the Purdue Pharma and Sackler Family Opioid Settlement. With your approval, uh, I will, uh, enroll the county in this settlement. We've been getting money in in trivs and drabs from numerous settlements across a number of years. Uh, we had a discussion on that, created a fund on it, uh, I think about a month ago. We got a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, I think is the current balance in that fund. I have reached out to the community coun- community counseling services organization, Ms. Cox, uh, what, I think they were, Whit- Ms. Whitney Cox. We are meeting on that subject this week. Um, the idea is I'd like to get community, because we can't spend it on anything but opioid treatment. And the county really doesn't have the expertise to impact that, um, you, you know, that thing very well. So I'm reaching out to them, trying to enter into a partnership and I'm gonna have some meetings with her, uh, later this week on that. See how we can structure this thing. But with that said, this is just another settlement. With your approval, I will enter the county into another settlement and see how much money, um, triples in to support our opioid, um, efforts.
Motion to approve. Motion by Supervisor Williams, second by Supervisor Carver. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. You're done.
And that's another potential one right there. I'm just giving it to you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You gotta make a few bucks out of it, I don't know. I mean, that's what.
Okay, so, uh, you've authorized me to move forward on the bidding of, of our building over here to the, to the east of the courthouse. Um, one of the things that's taking place on that is our architect has gone out and submitted and requested quotes for the foundational work that's got to be done underneath that building. We split that, that thing into two jobs because he felt like if he were to put that in the bid, then whoever did it would sub it out and charge us twice what it was worth. So he went ahead and, and he, he got some quotes on doing all of the foundational work for it and then we will bid the renovating work.
Okay.
So with, with your approval, um, what I'd like to do is, uh, accept the low quote of twenty-two thousand one hundred and seventy-two dollars from Bowlin Foundation Repair.
Move approval.
Motion by Supervisor, uh, Carver, second by Supervisor Trina. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. You're done.
Along those same lines, um, you guys have previously authorized me to, uh, get with the architect and, and prepare something in the small courtroom. Um, I'm trying, Sharon, I had sent you a email wanting to set up a meeting with all the chance report judges and, and try and look at what he's thinking to get their input so that we can keep everybody, get their buy-in so that we won't have, um, dissatisfaction in, in what the end results may be. So Sharon, if you could help me arrange that meeting, that'd really be great. I'm sorry. I'll try again. I'll go back and, I might've been in a fever dream when I sent that email this past week. Yes, ma'am. Um, disbursement of seized funds. I'm not completely up on this. I received this from Rob, but apparently some, some money was seized, uh, at the Dollar General in Sturgis at some point. It came into here. It got deposited into our seizure fund. They've done all of the, they've run all the wickets and Rob's ready to give it to Sturgis and take a little bit of his to it, so. Sir. Nobody claimed it. That's what I understand. Yes, sir. That's my understanding. Yes.
Motion to. Motion by Supervisor, uh, Little, second by Supervisor Trina. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. You're done.
County property appraisal report. So this is kinda new to me. I'm, I'm leaning in to being the county's insurance representative. It's not an area that I have a tremendous amount of experience in, but we've got a good broker over there in Jason Rider and he's been a tremendous help for me. Um, but what I provided with you is the appraisal report. I've done an initial assessment of this thing and I've come back with three properties that I've got some concerns about and I have, uh, I have expressed those concerns to Jason. Um, I guess I'm, I'm asking you guys to authorize me to, uh, set the stated value based on the estimated requirements. So for example, they're doing replacement costs on the old hospital. And it's like, come on now, if that thing burned down tomorrow, are we really gonna replace it or are we just looking at cleanup costs? And so I'd rather not pay the additional money for the replacement cost of it. I'd rather set a stated value that's less than that based on my best estimate as to what it would cost to clean it up, which should be much less than what it would cost to replace it. And that way our cost, our insurance cost would go down. Um, and then.
If something happened to it, we got four million dollars worth of coverage on it right now.
But you gotta build four million dollars back right there when we wanna do that.
Well, we probably would, because anything we build, it don't, it don't cost. You know, I mean, I, I don't think we could go wrong. I mean, I'm just, just thinking outside the box. But you know, that's just, he brought it up, man. You brought it up.
Hey, I, I just told y'all that I'm, I'm not an insurance guy, right? I'm doing my best to learn about it and, and I think based on my study, you know, that I, this is the recommend, my best recommendation to you is let's do a stated value based upon what it would cost, you know, to clean it up if it were a total loss as opposed to rebuild it. Cause they'd just bring it back to what it is and I don't know that we would, we would, if we did decide to rebuild it, we wouldn't wanna rebuild it as it is.
We definitely don't wanna go to a new hospital then. We know that.
Right. And, and so it's kinda the same thing with the old jail, uh, same concept. The rebuild is gonna involve some security standards, I think, that we don't necessarily need to implement. Um, we're only housing trustees. We're doing laundry over there. We're doing some maintenance work over there on, uh, vehicles and that kinda stuff. So the rebuild doesn't need to meet the security standards of a traditional jail. And so I'm wanting to do a, to try and figure out what a true rebuild would cost as opposed to, uh, the normal security standard. Cause it, they, they increase the premiums on that thing significantly. And I just want an opportunity to study it and see what a stated value rebuild would be. And then finally, the nine-one-one building, um, I'm concerned that the, uh, the estimated value of the contents on that building dropped significantly. And I don't fully understand why. So I'm asking them to do a reevaluation of that. I know there's a lot of expensive equipment. With that said, most of that E-nine-one-one business is just, um, monitors and, and fan- most of the high dollar stuff lives up in the cloud now. So, not yet. So that, that's what's concerning me. I'm asking them to reevaluate the contents of that building cause I think it's understated. That concludes my report on this. Uh, with your authorization to proceed on those three items, I will work with, uh, um, Jason Rider to try and get those items nailed down. The deadline on it is August the tenth, so I'm gonna need the authority to move on your behalf.
So motion by Supervisor Trina, second by Supervisor Little. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. You're done.
And I found this report to be very useful. It's, the reason I put the whole report in here is because, man, this would be something I'd stick in, you know, stick away somewhere that I could refer to, cause it's got every building we got, how big it is, where it's located. It'd just be a good reference to leaving if you're not using it for insurance purposes. Oh, here we go. East Octavia Hall wastewater district payment request. What's, what's on the table is to approve payment of the county's portion of a Neil Schaper engineering invoice. Our share would be forty-four thousand five hundred dollars. As, as a part of this discussion, I need to make the board aware of a development. If you, if you guys will recall, I had been working with the county all of about thirty days or less when I became aware of the requirement to obligate ARPA funding. And I was scrambling around trying to figure out what did we have obligated and in the, in the scope of obligated meaning you had to have contracts or purchase orders or, you know, those kinds of things in place. Couldn't just have a sheet of paper saying you wanted to do it. And so part of that involved reaching out to East Wastewater, trying to figure out, goodness gracious, guys, how much money are y'all going to spend? They committed to spend three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. At that point in time, I was not even aware that there was a memorandum of agreement sitting somewhere. I hadn't been here long enough to know that. Maybe I could've asked, maybe. East Wastewater did not volunteer any of that information. So I, it, it was very difficult to get in touch with them and communicate with them. But they committed three fifty, so I obligated three fifty and I moved the remainder of that over to the, um, Maven Sturgis, Sturgis, Maven, whichever end you live on that road, uh, road project for the ARPA funds. Subsequent to that, um, Mr. Priceok has delivered to me a contract in the amount of one point four million dollars for the construction of, of that and he has provided to me a memorandum of agreement, uh, with the Octavia Hall County and the city of Starfall Committee, Octavia Hall County, to seven hundred thousand dollars in ARPA funding. Um, this is the only written agreement that I'm able to find. I certainly didn't enter into hindsight being twenty-twenty. Maybe I should have. I'm a lot more experienced as a county administrator now than I was in early December. Um, hindsight being twenty-twenty, maybe I should've entered into another agreement. I did not at the time. The current agreement on the table that's been executed is seven hundred thousand dollars. We have already spent three hundred and fifty thousand of that seven hundred thousand in ARPA funding on the Maven Sturgis Road project. But I wanted to make you guys aware of that and, um, to, to put on the table for discussion, potential solutions for that and ask for your approval to pay this forty-four thousand five hundred dollar engineering, uh, bills.
How did this play into the obligation of all ARPA funds being obligated by December thirty-first, twenty-four?
Our ARPA funds were obligated. We're at no risk to, of losing those funds. Uh, that was the reason why I put it on the Maven Sturgis Road because they couldn't commit, could, could, they, East Wastewater could not convince me that they were going to spend it all and I was not willing to risk losing the funds.
So we just need a motion for approval today?
I need a motion for approval to pay the invoice, but I want y'all to take that conversation we just had away. At some point, I'm gonna be coming back to you with a solution and, or a recommendation and, and I may have. At some point, I'm gonna be coming back to you with a solution and, or a recommendation, and, and I may have several sidebars with all of you. Here, there, and yonder, as this situation develops.
But of the one point four, we're, we're on the hook, seven hundred or three?
Seven hundred is, is in accordance with our memorandum of agreement.
Get something else with the three fifty.
Three, oh yeah, so we're on the hook for seven hundred.
If it materialized.
If it materialized, good point.
If it materialized.
Good point.
Yeah.
Well, there's a lot of ifs, I mean, you know, because we only paying one, one portion of it, of course, the work gotta be done, you gotta go through the process, right now, we just, they just asked for us to forty-four thousand.
That's right.
I got several issues, but we're discussing, like, but.
Yes ma'am.
Um. In, you know, in the true spirit of trying to get things done for people out there. We agreed because they would never come back to us, and never given us all the information we needed, none of the above. So we agreed to put down infrastructure, and that's why we went and had a third party to administer this, to make sure things were being done. The only thing that I have seen so far are some bills. Not for any infrastructure bills, but for engineering bills, you know, stuff like that. Where is the actual pipes being put in the ground, where's the infrastructure being put in? Cause that is the agreement that we had for infrastructure for this, not to pay some bills.
Now, I'm thinking the pipes are, I think all the pipes I'm seeing when I'm going to eighty two, but I see a lot of eight inch pipes that are down, and I'm thinking that's for that project, so I think they, they, they got boots on the ground working.
I know that there is some, some.
Yes sir.
Uh, potential litigation that's taking place because of the build out that's, that I think you're referring to. That may or may not exceed what was agreed to by the city of Star. So I think some infrastructure is being built out, and there's a little bit of controversy between East Wastewater and the city over what's being built.
And that, that, that is, that's, that's the problem I have, is that we had agreed to go ahead and. Give them money for the infrastructure, which is gonna help everybody. Not for some bills that are being paid or due or whatever, for the good of the, of people of the county for the infrastructure. And that's, you know, what I wanna say, and I mean, we can go back and look at board orders or look at, to the, you know, whatever.
We got some leverage in power, and I think the city was waiting on plans and schematics and drawings too, and it was told to them that the board hadn't released it yet, their board. So now you're in a position where you got some leverage in power, and I think that he can, he can relate that, but we really need an update on everything, but.
Well, and my, and my question is, can, can, but, all right, my question is, can we, let's, we can, can we not authorize to pay this bill? As long as we get the, um, before we hand the check, we get the documentation that we need in our hand?
Certainly ma'am, I, I'll.
Because, well, well, I'm, I'm, I'm just gonna tell you, it always works, you can ask somebody for some.
I thought, hey, arm wrestle on your back, as hard as we can, you just tell me how you wanna proceed, and I'll try to represent you.
That's what, what we want, and like, the plans and the hall, if they have, the board needs to release their plans, or you can lease everything to them, and we're, we will release the check to pay the engineering bill. Because it always works that way, if you wanna get paid, you gotta show the work for it.
And they want us to send a check to them, they want us to deposit a check, you know, from what I saw.
Yes, yes sir.
No sir, uh-uh, no sir.
I, I would let you know that now, cause you wouldn't be surprised.
No, 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 I, 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 I.
Yeah, I know, I know.
I think the check, the check should only have been released to Neil Schaefer.
Well, I have that.
And made out to Neil Schaefer.
Like supervisor Fran said, though, the city is waiting on a plan and specifications to be presented to them, of what's being, being proposed to be put in the ground. They don't have that, we, we authorized for the putting in the ground of the infrastructure.
And that, but we're, aren't we paying for it?
We're paying engineering things right here.
Engineering fees, the city's waiting on, but if we're paying for engineering fees, where is the work product? I want the work product for the bill.
And I think they, they meet, uh, second, running Tuesday, whatever, I think you make, I don't know whether your schedule allows it, maybe we need to. Get on their agenda to let them know what we need before we go in.
Did we, are, are we the, the, uh, board member, appointee authority?
Right.
For that?
We are.
And, and.
But we can't resolve.
I know, but, 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 but they, they do have to be reappointed, so.
Right, they have to be.
And, and I struggle trying to locate, uh, subsequent appointments, I think that I have identified a few of them. Uh, I've been doing some more work on that since you and I discussed it last, um, using some AI tools that I have and some past minutes and, and, um. But I don't think that all, I can't find appointments on all of their board members. And I do have one or two here and there, uh, but not all of them, so I don't know. How many of their current board members are legitimately appointed, I can't prove it, gay or nays.
Yeah, I think all of them, I don't think any of them like, it's bad.
Is that right?
I think all of them are current, they're not.
Well, I was trying to search for the source documents and, and had a little difficulty laying hands on it. Dwight, uh, Mr. Priceok indicated me that they all were, I asked him to provide for me their appointment dates, and I did get a good solid list of who they are now. Um, and so, he agreed to provide me a list of their appointment dates and the current term, uh, waiting on that, so.
So the, the farm back is gonna be, the board needs what before we move?
Well, I think we need to pay for engineering services, you gotta have product, I mean, I don't know that you, you gotta set something.
You, I mean, I mean, you're paying for it, that's like if I'm, you know, when I'm building a house, when I go to pay, you know, my arse that for.
I, I just wanted to get something official, and, and he can deliver that, and we can see what his farm is.
Yes, and before we pay it, that we're gonna authorize to pay it, but we want the work product for, for all, um, you know, for the plans. You know, what we're paying for, but we also want for East Wa, Wastewater, we want their plans, and, 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 you know, on a timeline on when, when this gonna be done.
And take Neil Schaefer contract, still part of the.
Well, and I don't know if this is the first payment on a, you know, a bigger design, or, will it tell a hundred percent complete?
And, and that's, that's what I'm saying, these are all old things that they've already done that hadn't been paid, so, if they can produce the work document, documentation for it. And, but, but we're not, but, but that, but that pay goes after, that, that, that check goes to Neil Schaefer.
That's why I hate for them to be, Neil Schaefer, any contract to be tied up with any type of miscommunication, it should've been him, because that's, that, that's not right, you know, people like that.
If it doesn't stipulate that, that we have to give the, the, the money to East Ways, can we, can we?
Yeah, you could, now he's asking them to do that, but you know, we just, we don't wanna be upset to be.
But remember, we, exactly, but isn't that why we set it up through, you know, set it up through the third party to where, uh, where, what, what is, what we are paying for is being paid? And that we're making sure of that.
And all of the caveat is that, you know, they gotta get the matching running from the state, that, that may be the issue.
But, but they.
They have to go through, uh, East Octavia Hall.
But they can have a paid receipt.
Yeah, I don't know.
They get a paid receipt, they would say.
I think so.
So we want.
If they're always state gonna match it, though, it'd have to be some type of utility company like that. So, so, so where are we, are we authorizing a payment, but to be paid to Neil Schaefer? Upon receipt of?
Upon receipt of the, the plans and the document, but we want East Wastewater to also come up with their plans. You know, of what they're doing, because this isn't a lot of money, and so far, we've gotten nothing.
We need some proof of infrastructure getting put in. Motion by supervisor, little second by supervisor trainer. That we up pay, authorize the payment of the Neil Schaefer invoice to be paid directly to Neil Schaefer. Upon receipt.
Upon a receipt of, of work product.
Upon receipt of work product, I don't agree with you. I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go see what I can do, I, I think I understand what y'all trying to do. Let me go, y'all pass this, let me go figure out what I can do, and I'll get back in touch with you. I understand what you're trying to do, let me see what can really be done.
All the things.
You gotta get the matching, that's, that's.
Yes sir.
Motion passes unanimously.
Alright. Invoices and credit card charges, um, there's a few invoices in here, uh, actually only one for Pritchard Engineering. Uh, in the amount of fourteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars for Sunfruit Bridge, and then the credit card charges. Um, I will point out to you, y'all authorized me to get a separate credit card with. A, its own credit limit in order to put this Google Suites charge on, if you will recall. Well, I called Kedons, and I told them everything I needed, that's exactly what I wanted, and they were gonna do this thing, yeah, 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 we're gonna do it. And then they didn't do it, they just basically sent me another credit card with another credit card number, and put it on the same credit limit. As everything else, which was something that I was concerned about, so, I, I got to kinda go back and try and rework that issue, but. This, this credit card charge includes our charge for, uh, our Google Suites, and it is not hitting a separate card as we had hoped or discussed that we were trying to get set up.
But you, 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 uh, keeping the invoices?
Oh, yes sir, yes sir, we, we got it, have not.
Okay. So we need a motion, uh, do y'all do these individually, or? Uh, motion to pay the invoice for Pritchard Engineering, I'm, I moved that, uh, second by supervisor trainer. Uh, all in favor, motion passes unanimously. Second, uh, motion to pay credit card, motion by supervisor Little, second by supervisor Williams, all in favor, motion passes unanimously.
A R C grant contract modification, if you'll recall, um, it's been a few months ago, we applied for a contract extension on the, uh, North Star Arc Grant. Uh, they have provided that approval, and, uh, we need, I need approval from you guys that are into this agreement for the extension.
Motion by supervisor Little, second by supervisor Williams, any discussion? All in favor, motion passes unanimously.
Um, coroner Michael Hunt has approached me, there's a copy of the email that he provided. Uh, requesting to purchase iPads for a new platform that the, the coroner is moving to, just. Everybody's moving into the cloud now, just about everything is moving into the cloud, and he's needing some, uh, new technology in order to facilitate that.
Motion by supervisor Little, second by supervisor Trainer, any discussion? All in favor, motion passes unanimously.
And then, last but not least, are the, uh, payroll changes, uh, for the current period, no, this is not last, actually, I got a claim docket, I got. The pass, but, the payroll changes for the current period. Subsequent questions?
Motion by supervisor Little, second by supervisor Williams, any discussion? All in favor, motion passes unanimously.
And then finally, the claims docket, I didn't get it put on the agenda, I, uh, I guess in my. Um, disability this last few days, uh, I just neglected to add that item on there, and I just realized it wasn't on the agenda this morning. But it was included in the packet, it's claim number thirty-eight, uh, thirty through forty-one sixty-four. Totalling, um, five million nine hundred and eleven dollars and eighty-three, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars, um, it was included in the packet.
Motion paid Williams, motion by supervisor Little, second by supervisor Williams, any discussion? All in favor, motion passes unanimously.
Trainer and Williams. Little and Williams, I'm so sorry. Little. Williams. I could get you, see.
That is, uh.
Subsequent questions, that concludes my report. Thank you, sir. Uh, we're now down to chance for the clerk, Ms. Williams.
The only thing I got is an order to coin file derailment personal property assessments with much corrections.
Motion by supervisor Trainer, second by supervisor Williams, all in favor, motion passes unanimously. And. Okay. Our board attorney had to, uh, leave the meeting, so we're down to, uh. Supervisor business, we started with District Four, supervisor Little.
Um, nothing from the board, may I, everything's gone.
Okay. District One, supervisor Thor.
You know, I just wanna say thanks to all y'all with the E nine one one situation and, uh, the restructuring, and seeing these two young ones here today, I just think we've made. A good decision, and I'm looking forward to, uh, supervisor Little and myself, and representing the board on, uh, the chief's meeting and the communication issues they're talking about, and all that's being settled. They have the, uh, gentleman there with the radio company, and, and I sort of talked to a couple of teams, and I feel like. You know, through a series of actions, but everything, not only to take care of, it's gonna be better in the future for our citizens, lots of, of county on the spot signs and things, it ended up being a good meeting, and.
It, it was a very good meeting, um, some of the angst that was expressed in this meeting, I think might have been a little unfounded, had they just waited. Uh, for the opportunity to attend this meeting, I think a lot of their anxiety would've been.
Uh, there's two supervisor, uh, just one thing for consideration, I'd like to, once we get all of this, and I know personnel and dealing with, uh, compensation, like we had at the last board meeting about. New employees and, and salaries and things like that, I want us to get a, do a better job of communicating to our, our employees about the personnel policy. You know, how to go about when you got certain concerns, grievances, or even if you want, ask for a pay increase. Because what's happening is, is that, you, you don't want to create a, you don't, as I keep saying, unintended consternation, and I, and I really won't. Cause when people come to me, with, with certain things, then I try to be professional and send them back to their immediate supervisor in their department. And I don't want us to have an environment that, for them not to come to me, but the bottom line of it is, they didn't have to come to me for, for some, for some action to be taken. Off of whatever your concern is to be heard, but with the way things were going on, I had need to be documented, and so when you call me about something, uh. It may not get documented, but if you follow the proper process, you know, whether it's a grievance process, or whatever case might be, and I know just traditionally, our employees, some employees may feel that they're, well, it won't make any difference. What, what I do, but my responsibility, it does make a difference, you know, people don't do what, do what they wanna do, they do what you let them do, that's why I look at it, so. I'm trying to encourage employees that we have now, to follow the process, you know, trust the process, you know, and whatever it may be. And then when you, and, and that means that when they go through, uh, with the county administrator, or whatever you have, to see if we can identify things, and, and just create a, a, a. I think we have a good working vibe in here, I think we got a good county, but at the same time, that's why we show up every meeting, we see what we can improve. And so that's one of the things I was wanting to encourage, uh, county administration, and even all department heads, to have better communication with your employees. And I know you can't deal with every little, small thing, but you wanna deal with things that are small before they get to be blown out of killer. Because these little things can affect our, impact our affect, and that's what I hate to see, little, small stuff that's kinda keeping different than us, and we can't be effective. When we can go ahead and try to put it to rest, or whatever it may be, and we do have employees, you know, they see what's going on, they watch what's going on, they got their different opinions about different things, some of it's legitimate, some of it's not. But we still have to have some process in place to make it, to make it, give them, make it be calm, make it be legal, you know, whatever we do.
Well, and, and honestly. The county has some policies that, the handbook, I, I, I don't think we understand how valuable that handbook is, and yes, there's some things that need to be changed about it, but that handbook is a good document. It, it is far and above some of the places that I've seen, seen and worked before, it's a good document. I like the handbook, there are other policies that need to be fleshed out, there are procedures that need to be fleshed out, the form, the step, a step-by-two need to be fleshed out. So, um, the personnel ordinance is kind of a first step, and then we're gonna move through some policies, and then we're gonna build out some procedures, and. Agreements policy is one of those things that we, we have to codify, because. When, when you get to go into E O C and the Department of Labor and, and all of the law, you know, the labor lawsuits and things, that's. Those are the first things they start asking for, is, you know, what are your grievance policies? Well, the employee handbook is okay, but it's, well, it, the purpose of the employee handbook is for the employees. The grievance policy needs to be fleshed out a whole lot more detail than what's in the handbook, and, and so, um. Those are a lot of things that we gotta. And, and so, um, those are a lot of things that we gotta flesh out and, and the framework that, that y'all allowed, you know, approved and allowed me to move forward with is, is a positive step and as we work through these things, I, I really hope we can get those things documented.
That's all right.
So, I got, I own break and seven employees stopped me down there and said, they're having a hard time parking here because of all the Main Street stuff, so I know you guys doesn't have spots, just walk us down there's a next spot, other than that, that's it, and so some of these ladies are saying, I'm riding around twenty, thirty minutes and it's affecting my lunch break and getting back late, so I'm sitting there trying to wrap my brain around, only thing I could think on that back parking lot, we went down Run Road and had seven spots. Anything y'all come up with, I just want y'all to know you may get calls from employees saying there's seventy-two parking lots that are gonna get taken out of the city.
Call.
Yeah.
Well, it's very bad right now.
What, what I'm in trouble with is last week we had Chancery Court turn and circuit. Well, circuit, the people, or circuit are supposed to be parking at the church, they're not, they're parking in our parking lot.
Always Griffin to here?
Well, they're not parking at Griffin, they're parking in our parking lot, then we've got youth court going on with our court and the city employees that are working on Main Street, that, on these little shops, they're parking in our back parking lot, so I mean, for the last two weeks, my girls have been back, have been late for thirty minutes coming back.
Well, I mean, the only answer, I can even say, I told them I don't have an answer, but maybe designate one wall down there as county employee parking only, a thirty-minute parking for bid something, because I mean, we've gotta help, help our employees and I just told them I don't have an answer, so y'all start thinking on it and whatever we can come up with, so.
Yeah, I think it's, it's pretty bad.
Did we get an agreement from Griffin to park in their parking lot?
Yes.
Yes.
We've got enough.
Twelve hundred dollars a year.
No, no, one day.
Two thousand.
Two thousand a year.
There's now circuits going on, plus.
I'll, I'll see.
Well, circuit, circuit is supposed to make all those announcements, you know, during the first jury day and.
And they probably do, but the people are still parking over here.
And whatever we can do to eliminate people having to come to the courthouse, that they can do online and even if we have to look at, you know, making it even cheaper to do it online, little stuff like that makes a difference. I mean, you should have to come into the courthouse and stand in a long line and get a tag.
Well, I will say that Joey is fixing to go with this company and they've got this kiosk machine.
Right.
And it's gonna be put here and it's gonna be put at circuit and it's gonna be put at justice. So you can come in here and it's gonna be right in the, in the front door, so you don't have to stay in line, you pay your taxes on it, then you can get your car tag on it. So that she's in the making of doing that, but it's still, you know.
You can do that online.
Yeah. Yeah.
I know, it's about, it's about.
Three percent charge, the charge.
But it actually, it's still.
Come inside with your.
How much is your tag worth?
Three percent on five hundred dollars, car tag, it make me back up.
And the law says that the county has to, the county, city, whatever entity, has to charge that you can't not cha- charge that fee, that can't.
Well, I mean, we, we'll look at it and get to it, but you know, I'm just, I'm just thinking about it, you know, 'cause sometimes, well, you know, hey, uh, like with my water bill, I, I'd rather pay that extra fee than forget to pay that water bill and that sucker be off.
I would rather have everything on, yeah.
Carl.
And I have to go.
We have I T infrastructure, the hell of this, the technology we're talking about.
We're, we're moving slowly forward, we'll have to do shortly, but, uh, one thing related to what supervisor Trainer was just mentioning, the new payment professional, Eye on Business, they've actually had some interesting conversations about how they may be able to structure those payments within the law so it doesn't appear to the public to be as high as it is, because the truth is, like Wayne mentioned, there's a lot of people that would take advantage of those services, but it's too cheap to pay three and a half percent, so then you come sit in line. And there, there may be some ways to, to move that fee around where it's still within the law, but it doesn't appear to the public that they incur as much of a fee, and we may be able to shift demand, like, you know, you're at an airport. They, she'll have some more information on that as they try to flesh that out and maybe there, maybe some things to consider there.
I think we did all great discussions, uh, supervisor Williams.
Well, yeah, I've had some discussion about, um, about tag being suspended. Situation in particular with young peoples who their parents neglected to pay the bill.
We're talking about garbage.
Garbage bill, right. Their parents neglected to pay the garbage bill, well, the parents are dead now and the young person, she gives her age, she get to be eighteen or so, she wanna move out across town. Well, it's really not her bill. A very young person and the bill is something like two thousand dollars or so, well, how is she gonna pay two thousand dollars that her parents, uh, occurred when he was living? So, how do we hold that young person responsible for somehow paying that two thousand dollar bill off when their parents occurred, uh, um, the pa- their parents is one that, uh, caused bill to exist?
Is that kind of like when you have, um, say like, um, a house burned down and then the city has to clean it up, well, then the city puts a lien on the property and then whoever buys the property or assumes the property has to pay that lien before they can do anything with it, is that?
Right, that's same way, that's same way, and the person who were actually a adult person, the adult person who's gonna move into the house and own the house and paying the bills there with this young person and living in an apartment somewhere, paying bills somewhere, somewhere else in, in, in an apartment. But I can understand the person who was really a homestead in there. If, if, if they setting up a homestead there and actually living there, then yes, that, that bill is gonna be on that property for life pretty much, for the life of the property, the bill is gonna be there. But these young fo- young people move off, go to college and stuff like that, but still, as long as they use that address, if they use that address, they're responsible for getting the bills paid as well as other members of the family.
Yeah, the way, the way the, the way the policies are currently written, um, I think, I think that liability attaches to that car tag and they can't get a car tag.
It does, it does.
Uh, unless some sort of payment arrangement is made.
Right.
Um.
And I, and I understand that to be true, they can't get their car tag, here they all, all own the college and taking courses and driving back and forth to school. But the person who actually set a homestead there, I can understand they are responsible for paying that. But how do we, how do we hold sixteen-year-old, seventeen-year-old, eighteen-year-old responsible?
Well, who, who's? We having some hypothetical conversations, I think we need, I think the, the true answer is to, to re-explore the policy. We need to have some sort of appeal process in place and, and some, some mechanism for adjudication. I learned a lot about, I, I don't wanna say I learned a lot, I learned more about this at the comforts this past year. And I came back and, and I did some work and I, and I drafted up some policy, uh, kind of revising some of that, that, that puts an appeal uh, process in place that allows for some arbitration that, that ultimately lands in the county administrators' lap, which is not something I'm really excited about having to, to take on, but it's either that or possibly getting an outside attorney that would hear these appeals and try to make some sort of, you know, just determination as to how to proceed and, and, uh, if you'd like, I'll, I'll work on that draft that I, I did and, and bring it, you know, kind of before this board for consideration to see if we can tweak our current policies to help address some of those kinds of.
Well, right, right now, we, we, we sort of have a, a non-formal policy to where an individual can contact that, that supervisor and explain to them and, and talk to them about the issues. Uh, the county cannot forgive any, any services that's been rendered for payment. We cannot forgive any, any payment like that, but we can and go and try and do it about working with you. Uh, as far as situation like what you're talking about, uh, just having them to call up and tax office and request that that particular vehicle right there be released, uh, for the purchase of a tag. Uh, but the, the property owner, the honest calls upon them to be responsible for that be, for that bill ultimately. And what happens is, even if they pass away, there, that, that bill is attached, I think. I think the board voted to attach that to the property, and so during the title search, the individual is maybe possibly looking to purchase that property, will see that there is a lien and try and renegotiate that amount out of it. You know, if that's so, but, but we've got sort of a non-formal policy of trying to help individuals in particular situations, sort of like, but, uh, Wayne just said.
I would say like the, the hospitals, you know, county-owned, people can pay a modified amount, ten, twenty dollars a month, sometimes on fifty thousand dollar bill, but individuals should be able to get a tag, I would, I would be in favor of something as long as they're making consistent payments toward a bill.
Now, that, that.
I mean, I, I think this isn't somewhat, I don't know if this is a common occurrence or if this is an isolated, it's an isolated incident, you know, I know we can, we need policy and we need to look at this one incident, but if some, if they can, my opinion, if they can prove that they're paying on it, they need to get a tag.
Well, what, what, what we did put in place was, I, I think, talking about a bill of two thousand, we put in place if individuals go up and pay twenty-five percent of the bill and agree to make two, double payments per month, then the tag would be, and as long as they are doing that, they can continue to get the tag.
Is that a policy somewhere?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, that's a policy, that's a policy, but we're not comfortable about an adult who owns a, who is vivid and is setting up a house that this person is going off to college and, and, uh, their tag is on hold. Of course, if they can get their parents to say, okay, we gotta pay it, we gotta pay it, we, it is a certain amount that, like you say, is twenty-five percent and then they have to make double payments. Have to make double payments every month to try to pay it off, that, that is a policy. We're not talking about adults, however.
Well, I'm wondering if the vehicle's in, in the parent's name, in which case the vehicle.
Well, as long as that individual is using that, that address. If they purchase a tag, it's gonna be attached to, to that particular address, so. We, we did, you know, we, we met once, they were here at that meeting when we met down at P D D and discussed this in depth and that's how we sort of came up with the twenty-five percent and double payments.
The policy is not bad, I mean, the, the, the structure of it all is pretty good, it talks about, uh, putting a lien on the property, it talks about paying the twenty-five percent, setting up a payment plan, what, how, what it takes to get relief, uh, that kind of stuff, the, the, the piece of this puzzle that I felt like was missing was, was two parts, number one, a, a solid documented appeals process, 'cause sometimes injustices happen, like what supervisor Williams was saying, and you need somebody as an arbiter to kind of sift through all of those details and figure out what, what ju- true justice looked like and be able to issue a ruling on it. And then the second part, second part that I found was missing is the, the state has an opportunity for us to, um, to, to do what they call offset, and so you can offset the garbage bills off of somebody's state tax return or any sort of state funding that they would be due, and, and that was another piece of this puzzle that I felt like the policy needed to incorporate, so. Uh, I'd be happy to, to try to take a, another goo- good look at it and come back with something if you can.
And that, and there you also, uh, if, for instance, the electricity has been cut off from that particular property, uh, sometimes it's, and, and that bill continues to run, but if you can bring proof showing when, when it was actually disconnected, that, that portion of bill will be, will take it out, so. That works well for adults.
Yeah.
Yeah. But thank you, that's good, very good. Anything else out of five? Yeah, um, I don't know whether we updated the four-year road plan or not. And I don't know these roads that we are paving, whether they should be on the four-year road plan or not. Um, I would think so, so with that in mind, I want to add, uh, Daily Road, that's my motion, to add Daily Road to the four-year road plan, double that amount out.
Second of all. It's been moved by supervisor Williams, second by supervisor Trainer, that we amend, uh, four-year road plan to add those particular roads in District Five. Uh, any discussion?
Are those paid out of District Five funds or available?
They, they will be. All in favor, motion passes unanimously.
We do need to make a note that, uh, the supervisor will.
Motion passes four zero. Anything else out of District Five? I don't have anything coming from District Three, uh, so with that being said, there's no need to go into executive session. Uh, that being said, motion to recess.
Do we need to recess until the? I'm trying to remember what Rob said, do we need to put a recess meeting on the, the June, the prior, to the eighteenth?
Resess, recess the next Monday?
He did say Friday, but then he said Monday and he said ten.
He said this Friday.
Well.
But he's not gonna be here, he needs to be here.
He mentioned it.
Yeah, he had mentioned it.
But, but we can.
Try and call him.
But if he not gonna be here, we can still meet, we can try, we can.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we can, we can go ahead and schedule a recess.
We don't have to meet, I just think he's wanting to get it like on the docket so that I can post it and then if we don't need to have it.
Well, let's recess today.
Okay, yes.
Well, well, if we set and we post.
Oh, we gotta meet, then we get into that catch twenty-two.
Well, if we show up, we can still, I mean.
Yeah, we, we, like we did the other day, we can show up and just join, uh, so we can go ahead and set a recess meeting for what day will we?
If we need, if we need.
For, for Friday to eight, at eight A M.
Eight, that's, and then we, we knew you had showed, if you, you, you tied up, we just three of us show up.
Yeah.
And then we just open up clothes.
So let's, we, we set.
That's what we gonna do again.
For eight, for Friday to eight, at eight A M, all in favor?
He mentioned.
Motion.
Motion by supervisor Trainer, second by supervisor, uh, Carl, uh, motion to the general.
So.
Motion by supervisor Trainer, second by supervisor Williams, all in favor, motion passed four zero.
I have breathing.
All, all general. Uh, yeah.